I apologize for starting so late. We had a lot of things to discuss beforehand so that we know what we're talking about. Okay. First item on the agenda is public hearing proposed local law number one in 1992. It's the same one that had been previously proposed with the addition of a public referendum that would be added as one of the requirements. I will then declare the public hearing open and Mr. Belchiori has to make any comments before the end of the process.
As a representative for the city of Fulton, a taxpayer and all member of the sixth ward and a concerned citizen, I would like to share my thoughts and feelings along with other concerned citizens in the city of Fulton about the proposed referendum, namely local law number one, which will in effect change our city charter and give the county council the authority to make appointments to our fire and police departments. I personally do not oppose the local law being presented to the residents of the city of Fulton for their approval or disapproval. What I do object to and oppose is presenting this local law to be voted on as a separate election issue. The special election will cost the city residents between $2,000 and $4,000. If we put the local law to vote during the regular November election, the cost is zero. To spend this money on an issue that could be decided to have cost to the city in November to me is a misappropriation of funds. I and other residents do not understand the motivating force and the need for such an election to move at this time. The issue was brought to the floor initially when the city was in the midst of appointing a police chief for the city. That task has been completed and there are no pending appointments to be made before November, so why the expenditure? I know the response to this from some will be that this item has been budgeted for. This type of mentality has cost the city money that could have been used for other projects. That particular train of thought cost the city over $6,000 last month. How can we counsel, being aware of all the problems that plague this city, justify a special cost election? I for one could find better use before $1,000. With the recent heavy rains we have had, we have all been plagued with flooding problems due to our family sewer system. We are in dire need of streets paving, curbing, and sidewalk repair. We have two unions in the city that are working without a contract and no increase in wages, but yet we can afford to appropriate money for a special election. Our park will not be able to offer its usual summer programs to the children of this community because of lack of funds, but yet we can spend money on a special election when other issues should take priority. In reference to priority, we need to consider continuing education for our firemen and policemen. Our fire department at the present time is in need of emergency medical training. We should not depend solely on mental ambulance services for all our emergency calls. It is pointless to send out our emergency vehicle without trained technicians. At the present time, we only have one EMT per shift. We could train 30 of our firemen to be certified first responders at a cost of $3,000, which they do not have in their budget. In my opinion, this would make better use of our money and would raise the level of our fire department to the highest standard. In closing, we the council need to establish goals for our city and not spend money unnecessarily when we have other options available to us. It is unfair to the city residents who have had their taxes nearly doubled over the past four years to use their money and mine without proper justification. The time has come to use valid judgment and address immediately and not act on the wings of the buit. Yes, let us put the local law to vote, place it where it belongs in November, and use our money more wisely.
Any comments? I think a lot of people are familiar with the history of this local law, which seeks to restrict the powers of the fire and police commission. We spent over $6,000 on a few requests to restrict those powers and put a freeze on any promotions or appointments. Now wants to spend up to another $4,000 that I agree with Mr. Belchiori on is a waste of time when it can be done in the fall election at no cost. Not only the cost will be zero, but you also have greater turnout. Now, I know everybody has to agree with me on this, but I have seen a lot more of this over the years than any of members of this council. And I've seen special elections, and they draw a lot fewer people than the general elections, particularly one this fall where you're going to have a spirited campaign for president that always draws a big crowd of voters. Special elections, too, you have to advertise to inform the public of the issues so that those that do vote will know what they're voting for. That's another expense. You have to use, we have to use our own public officials, like the city clerk staff, to supervise the election. This is not done by the county. It's our sole responsibility to run this election. So we're spending a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of efforts to hold a special election to accomplish frankly very little. There's no problem with the fire and police commission. The president, the chairman of the commission has assured this council in open meeting that he would cooperate with the council, submit any proposals that he, the commission may vote on in advance before any action is taken by the commission. They've already shown they do exactly what some members of this council wanted done in the first place when it came to appoint a new chief of police. So... And as Ross pointed out, we desperately need to get on to other businesses. We need to get away from these things that have very little merit as far as the essential business of this city is concerned. We are facing a lot of serious problems. Just lost 25 people from all health. Other communities in this area are losing personnel. They're joining unemployment roles. And we have problems that we have to take care of that are a heck of a lot more important than this issue. And I would ask the council not to pass this local law this time, to defer it until fall when it can be done at the next general election. Any other comments? Jim?
I'd like to see him win the fall. I see no reason to spend the extra money. I saw no reason spending $5,000 for lawyers fighting the fire and police commission. You went ahead and you, for what, 90 years, you appointed chiefs of police. Everyone's been satisfactory. What's the big problem now? The point is, what do you mean the way it was done? That's the good answer to half, the way it was done.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Anyone else? Thanks, Ross, for that low conference. Any other comments? Okay, the public hearing closed.
I'd like to get a little more info from the Nestle council before we vote.
Yeah, I'd like to table it.
It just, if this goes in the general election in November, we have to start the whole process over in September, October, or something. Is that right? Or do we just table it now and start it again?
Okay, now on the readyback floor and later then. Are you making a motion, Jim?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, Ross. Any second?
I'll second.
Have a roll call, both please.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yeah.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Second item placed. Resolved, the county council approves payment of the following bills. These are all budgeted items. Jones Chemicals, we have three bills. One for 1981-22 for ferrochloride, again for chlorine, and another in an amount of $1,100. Third bill is to Jones Chemical for 1906-70 for ferrochloride. Batcock Oil, 2204-42 for diesel fuel. Northern Tuminas, 2432-80 for coal patch. Agway Petroleum, 1563-50 for gasoline. Batcock Oil, 3,462-72 for diesel. Northern Aggregates, 4802-82 for ice control sand. Tracy Road Equipment, $3,950.82 for snowblower drums. And TCG Materials, $2990-60. They're all budgeted items, but over the $1,000 charter limit and needs the council's approval.
Any comment? Motion, please. Second. All in favor, indicate by aye. Aye. Both by no. Carry. Next item, please.
Resolved that the Nestle corporation is hereby authorized to extend and reconstruct Bird Street from Loop 481 to the city line at their own expense.
We have someone that can speak out, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I am Kurt Norpel, plant manager for Nestle. I have joining me tonight Merrill Hoffman from Golsen Engineering, who has done some preliminary engineering work for us on this project. And if there are questions of a technical nature, I would prefer those questions to Merrill. We are interested in developing a back access to our plant and therefore had requested to be put on tonight's council agenda to request the city to approve a change of the use of Bird Street to allow us access to and to use that street for access to the plant. I don't know how well you're all going to be able to see this print. I have other copies here.
We have copies, so, Kurt, thank you. If you want to, you can display it from this table.
So the, so can we see?
Yeah, give the audience a few of it.
I should have brought a big four-by-six print.
Bird Street, that's the one that runs Past Container, right?
Bird Street intersects 41 at McDonald's Restaurant.
Goes up to Zink, right?
Goes up to Zink.
And the proposal is to cross the tracks?
Correct.
That point over to the Nestle plant?
That's correct. Currently, the main access to our plant is on the far left-hand side of this print. Trucks come up Bay Street, which is predominantly a residential street. And the truck traffic, approximately 80 vehicles a day, together with all of our employee vehicular traffic, go up and down Bay Street in front of the plant. Trucks continue up into the far left-hand corner of the print where they turn into, through our main gate, into the plant property. Approximately 40 of those trucks a day stay on the front half of the plant. The balance, which is approximately 20, come down an alleyway between two main buildings on our site to get access to the back part of the plant for delivery of raw materials. The main driver for this proposal to develop an alternate access to the plant, which is up Bird Street, past Zink Manufacturing, across the rail tracks and into our property on the other side of the Conroe property, is to, is twofold. One is to help reduce a little bit the heavy truck traffic on Bay Street and help to alleviate some congestion problems that we have out there. The second purpose has to do with a project that we are developing at the plant currently that's been submitted to our parent company that involves construction of a new building and a new manufacturing line in such a manner that blocks access to the alleyway that carries truck traffic to the backside of the plant. In order to continue with the proposal and development process for this new project, we have to figure out another way to get the tracks to the trucks that need to get to the backside of our plant, onto the backside of the plant. And therein was the basis and rationale for developing the Bird Street proposal.
And this is going to be at your expense, is that right?
The county of Oswego has agreed to develop and fund the infrastructure development of Bird Street from Loop 481 to the Conroe property line, actually to our property line. From our property line onto our site, we would fund the balance of that.
Gee, I'll tell you what to do with that, Kurt.
Yes, yes.
And this, of course, is not that I interfere with any other structural establishment on Bird Street.
No, we have, we have done our own traffic survey to determine our truck traffic and asked the city police department to conduct a traffic survey on Bird Street. And they were able to determine through traffic counts that on average day over a three-day period, there were approximately 400 vehicular exits from Bird Street onto 481, both north and southbound. We would contribute an additional 20 plus or minus truckloads per day to that traffic volume. It's conceivable in a long-term plan, many years down the road, that that figure could grow to as many as 80 based on some other proposals that we've got going on for the plant. But for the foreseeable future, it would be somewhere in the area of 20 a day versus the current load on Bird Street of 417.
I can personally vouch for the fact that Bird Street has very low traffic since I live right across the road and my office also is low in traffic.
Is that intersection wide and accommodate a tractor trailer coming down the Bird Street?
They go up and down, do they? Yeah. Sure, they go in the container and Zink both. Any comment?
Were any kind of traffic lanes, does that make a lot of sense to you right here for what that's?
You can only do that with DOT's consent. I frankly don't see where it really makes any difference. These trucks are traversing 481 anyway on the way to Nestle plant. All this will do is they will turn up Bird Street instead of continuing on to the main plant, which...
Perhaps I could ask Merrill Hoffman to comment on that because he has had some conversations with the DOT on that.
Is that going to alleviate that disaster we have on South 43 where that tanker is backing into the plant?
This...
That could hold up traffic for 10 minutes.
This right now isn't, wait, I've never seen a tanker hold up traffic there, John. They park on the side of it. Well, I go down there every day, too.
If they're going in, there is a couple of guys that can back in there, but some of them, it's pitiful. It's pitiful. They hold traffic up or something?
That's the only thing that holds up traffic in Fulton, I think we're doing well.
To address the problem about the DOT, we had a conversation with the DOT in regard to the traffic and their initial impact was, their initial comment was that the amount of traffic that we're adding to 481, which averages about 15,000 people per day, is so small that it would not have any effect. The biggest impact on traffic count to 481 is actually on the balance, and what we're adding is pretty small. Kurt did mention that there are 420 property vehicles which exit from Bird Street onto 481. It would be interesting to note there are only 160 which turn into Bird Street off of 481. So that means about 260 of those exits are coming from the townhouse.
That is interesting. Thank you, Kurt. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask Officer Allen for his study if you found any conflicting interest in this thing with the intersection, Loop 4 Street and off.
Anyone else?
Just want to alleviate a problem on Bay Street that I've got a lot of complaints about where the tractor trailers bagging up in residential area.
No, that's true, Jim. It will diminish the traffic on Bay Street. Anyone else? Resolution? Wait, can I get a resolution first?
Result that the Nestle corporation is hereby authorized to extend and reconstruct Bird Street from Loop 481 to the city line at their own expense per their attached survey.
Any other motions, please? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Both by no. Carry. I want to thank you for coming, Kurt Allen, and we appreciate it. And we wish you luck. Next item, please.
Resolved city clerk be authorized and directed to pay the balance due to city SMP auto policies and all insurance policies for the city of Fulton to McDougal H.C. in amount of $170,589. Yes, this is the total cost for all the insurance policies that the city has, which is the general liability policy, the auto policy, the employee bank blanket bonds, the police professional and public officials policies for the city. The total of the insurance comes up to $223,000, which is $27,000 savings from 1991.
That's the budget, carry.
Yes.
Any comment? All, all in favor, Kurt? Motion, please. Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Both by no. Carry. Next item, please.
Result that the mayor be authorized to sign a proposal submitted by Mega Design dated April 7th for work on the library roof for construction costs not to exceed $1,750 to be direct charged to the 1440.4 engineering account.
This is, to monitor correctly, an icing problem on the roof that's created of some real problems of leakage into the top of the library, which could result in serious dry rot or damage. And this is that the engineers, city engineers approve when we follow an exhaustive way with the contractor. Any comment? Motion, please.
I'm with it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Both by no. Carry. Next item, please.
Result that the water and sanitation commissioner be authorized to purchase one VR 2000's spectrometer from HAC company at a cost of $1,500 to be a direct charge to the G8131.20 industrial pretreatment account.
How should we tell this, close our jury, please?
Roger, if you want.
These are for equipment to measure the various chemicals in the water.
And that's the budget? Okay. Any comment? Motion, please.
I'm with it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Both by no. Carry. First item on discussion. YMCA land acquisition. Oh, really? They don't have those. Okay. Back to the original agenda. Next item, please.
Result that the water and sanitation commissioner be authorized to purchase a tripole and safety harness for lab safety supply company at a total cost of $2,160.40 to be a direct charge to the G8130.20 industrial pretreatment account.
Any comment? Budget, aye?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion, please.
I'm with it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
No? Carry. Next item.
Result that the water and sanitation commissioner be authorized to purchase a mobile air pack from Sanford and Burtus fire equipment at total cost of $2,067.15 to be a direct charge to the G8131.20 industrial pretreatment account.
What is that?
It's a breathing apparatus they need to enter manholes.
Oh.
Piece of safety.
Yes, man. Any comment?
This is a claim of information. These items are paid for by industries.
We don't pay them?
They pay us and we pay them.
We pay them?
It doesn't talk about...
Right. Yeah. Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Both by no. Carry. Next item, please.
Result that the water and sanitation commissioner be authorized to purchase one oxygen combustible and hazardous gas meter from Sanford and Burtus fire equipment at total cost of $1,941.60 to be a direct charge to the industrial pretreatment account.
Another free, Jim? Motion?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Both by no. Carry. Next item, please.
Result that Sandra Woodward of RD5 County Route 8, Oswego, New York, has applied for a vendor's license to sell hot dogs, hamburgers, and drinks from a concession stand from April 22nd through, 92 through April 22nd to 93 at Bullhead Point and is therefore paid the fee of $200. Now therefore be resolved, the council approves the application for a vendor's license by Sandra Woodward under the license issued in accordance with the requirements in the city clerk's office in the Fulton City Code.
Under that? Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Both by no. Carry.
Discussion.
Okay, under discussion versus the YMCA land acquisition. Do we have somebody to explain that? Okay. Next item, please. City, ready? Jim?
Yeah, we discussed this earlier about leasing some of the slips in the arena now behind the Lock Restaurant and charging people X number of dollars a year to tax the votes there and then also a daily rate. I think I... I think our discussion led to us finding out more information from other areas.
Yeah, you're right, getting more information. Please, we'll talk down again later. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
Next item was withdrawn. Uh, any court please?
Result that this common council recognizes the Fulton Greater Tourism Council, which will be submitting proposals to the common council under the promotion of tourism account for funding purposes. And the, all these are subject to the approval of the Fulton County Council.
Motion?
I'm with it.
Second?
Second.
One thing I meant, George, just to bring some people up to speed, we met with the Chamber of Commerce and they are starting this Greater Tourism Council. And we just wanted to recognize them as a body because they want to do some good things in promoting the city of Fulton with our Beck Tax money. Right now, we have no formalized plan to utilize Beck Tax money. And they have some ideas and we ask them to present them to us.
Yeah, I get this, but... Any others?
Somebody make that motion. Yes, sir.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Chair. Next item, please. Well, that's something to hold to. We need more... We're not doing a resolution on that now. Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Spencer drew up the resolution.
Oh, all right.
Result that City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise a public hearing to be held on May fifth, nineteen ninety-two, at seven thirty P.M. in the council chambers on Municipalville in Fulton, New York relative to a proposed amendment to section eighty dash six point one of zoning ordinance of the city of Fulton entitled Special Use Permits, which would remove the restriction against special use permits in an R two residential district.
Motion?
I'm with it.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Chair. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item is the recyclable pickup. Chair?
This is something that the Fed discussed ever since last election, picking up recyclables once a month. I put on the agenda just to start things rolling to see if we want to go ahead and do this. I talked with Lucky Graham about this.
Lucky, yeah, Lucky.
Try and pick up once a month, I think we can do it. We average about twenty-four tonne a week.
Have you got any special time of the month to buy this?
What we do is we take the first full week of the month and still be the regular pickup day, Monday through Friday. It'll be the first full week of every month.
Also, what that can do is free up these people that are doing it all the time, all week long, all month long. And for three out of four weeks, they can be doing something else. They're carrying the lawns or helping with the paving or whatever.
Pick up trash.
Pick up trash.
Good idea. Okay, well, we'll give a try and see how it works.
If we were to go recycle once a month, my concern is for people that live in apartment houses, like there's three apartments in a house and there's no place in the yard to store the recyclables, like no shed, no garage, and we couldn't have a drop off point somehow. Maybe locate it to DPW, like a dumpster and lock it.
We tried that once before and all you're getting were people dropping the garbage bags off, full of garbage.
You have a lot of illegal dumping.
Well, they can always take it to the landfill. They always have that option. I mean, we may have to modify this as we go along, but I think the plan basically is that...
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it at all. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm concerned about the people that live in a house where there's two or three apartments and they have a child, they're going to accumulate baby food cans and jerrys and things like that. They may need a weekly drop off point if we can find such a thing.
When would we propose starting this?
Like, try it June first.
I agree with you about the reputation of starting June first.
I'll add it.
I don't know if anybody's given this any thought, but how about picking up garbage maybe instead of doing it five days a week, how about two and a half? I don't know if that would be a good idea or not, but, you know, might ease up some work crews to be doing some other things that we're going to be doing this summer as far as water and sewer projects, paving as such. You know, that would be a real good idea.
Let's add some of those to each other's time as maybe...
Well, why don't we make the amendment to the charter from now? And I made it something too that gives the council the power to change the times from time to time as the council sees fit. That way we've got some flexibility with the plan.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question asked you on this proposed cutback on the recycling, how's that going to affect the jobs of city employees?
I'm sorry, Bill, I couldn't hear you.
We want to know how this is going to affect city employees. You have a cutback on pickup, like John was saying, you talking about possibly doing garbage also the same way. You're going to end up laying off people.
Well, possibly those people would be put on other duties as need be. You know, we have a lot of water and sewer problems and a lot of paving to be done.
We don't work for the water and sewer department. That's their responsibility. Our people are responsible for the garbage, the trash, recyclables. We've already got people in layoffs. Union's not going to stand for any more layoffs.
Bill, the union doesn't make that decision, okay? When it comes to layoffs, that's prerogative of the council. But as far as not having enough work to do is concerned, I don't think that's going to be any problem because there's going to be plenty of work to do with reduced staff in the recreation department. I don't think it'll be any problem. That may not work out that way anyway. We've got to be trying things to see what can be done more, how can be done more efficiently. Yes?
I wonder if you have a figure on the trash sticker revenue?
We're going to have that next week.
You'll have that figure available the next week?
Yeah. In fact, we're going to have a figure on all revenues if that makes sense.
You don't have a hard figure right now?
Not right now. No?
Yeah, instead of once a month, they were thinking about having just two day pickup for the whole city, like we do when there's a holiday.
Well, that's what I was saying, maybe do it two and a half days.
Then you got Monday, Thursday, Friday, concentrate on other things.
Yeah.
Well, the way we've got this resolution framed is to give the council the power to do it differently. It's more feasible to do it. We've got to start somewhere. And this is what just the beginning. So unless, instead of doing it all month long, we're going to be doing it once a month. And we'll just have to see how many days it really takes to do it, Jeff. I have no way of knowing right now.
This would just be for the recyclables once a month because they have to be washed out.
Right.
Not really prepared.
Right.
The garbage is another matter, like Lincoln said, you know, doing it two days a week on Monday and Tuesday and then the other three days having the same crew do other work. That's something to look into because you don't want to obviously keep that around for a month.
Oh, no, this is only for recyclables. That's not, it's charged to continue to be once a week. Alex?
A lot of the work and talk is on recyclables and all that. What department has charge of the streets? I know they can't cross trades and all that, but who has charge of the streets? Which department?
DPW.
There is a...
Baby Department, it does the garbage and recyclables.
Baby Department?
Yeah.
Seems like we should spend a little less time on garbage, a little more time on our streets. They're terrible.
That's what...
I agree with you, Alex. The one problem we got there is where are we going to get the money to do it? That's the problem.
We still don't remember getting the chips correctly.
No, they haven't announced that yet. So we have to wait to see what the chips allotment is in the state. And then we'll know if we're going to have available for those.
Bill, I'd just to add that what the mayor was saying, what this is, is trying to manage our people to use them most effectively. You know, when we talked about this, we initially didn't talk about layoffs. But as you're campaigning or when you go through your wards, there's a lot of complaints, that I hear anyway, about people in trucks and how many are doing this and not doing that. And what we're trying to do is try some different proposals to better utilize the people that we have. And we hear complaints about, well, why can't somebody come fix my street, but I see three guys sitting in a truck picking up plastic bottles. So what we're attempting to do is better utilization of our manpower for right now.
Any others?
The changes to pickups, have they announced this, like...
Yeah, we'll have...
They'll be...
There'll be, there'll be, yeah.
Because we had on here the page that Robinson put out Thursday night and it's still there. No pickups, no nothing.
I have a comment, Ryan.
They're going to take it back.
Yes, sir.
I have a comment myself on that. I had a person in my ward, one of my constituents, call me the other day and ask why the trash was not being picked up. I said it was picked up, it was picked up yesterday. He wanted to know how come he wasn't informed. I said it was publicized in the official paper. He said, what is the official paper? And I told him that it was the Valley News. He said, I do not receive the Valley News. Therefore, I don't know if we're going to have to look into extended means of notifying the public so that everybody gets a chance to see this or what, but I just don't feel that what we're doing and using one source is reaching everybody.
I have a paper.
How about that TV spot that I mean, all the news I see about the banks and all that?
That's a good idea.
Two thirty-six, Public Access TV, pass it over.
Maybe radio too.
This will be our next two, day nine.
Yeah, we'll try to use media more extensively than we already have or to reach everybody. One, for the benefit of the people that are here tonight, since it is going to be started in June, we might want to cause, get the, that day. Any more comment? Motion please.
I'm with it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye. Maybe I have a resolution first. Withdraw the motion.
Result that section ninety-two dash seventy of Fulton City Code is hereby commended to read as follows. Effective June first, nineteen ninety-two, all recyclables shall be picked up once a month, which shall be the first full week of each month, beginning on a Monday, on the regularly scheduled pickup day or such other times, time or times, as may be determined by the Fulton County Council.
Uh, motion please. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Chair. Next item, please.
Next item is the building permit fees. The resolution I have here is resolve that effective May first, nineteen ninety-two, chapter seventy-eight, subsection seventy-eight twenty-six of Fulton City Code, the title fees be amended as follows. To add subsection seventy-eight dash twenty-six entitled Building Permit Fees and all fees as per catch. In special notation that this building permit fee schedule includes a certificate of occupancy. This building permit, however, shall in no way be interpreted to be that the certificate of occupancy, the certificate of occupancy will be issued to the permit holder upon completion of the final inspection by the building inspector.
This is an increase in, uh, building permit fees. It's long overdue, it's always likely behind other cities. As a matter of fact, the cost to the city preparation of the necessary papers and permit is far exceeded all fees.
For everybody's information, the biggest impact that this fee has is the zero to ten thousand dollar range. We used to charge, for instance, zero to one thousand dollars, five dollars for a building permit fee. Our building inspector Kim, you know, even the paper probably cost us five dollars to do that in his time. So what we're doing is making it more realistic, it's more in line with what the town of Granby charges. Anything from zero to ten thousand dollars will now be forty dollars. That's the biggest impact.
Any question?
Does that include utility sheds?
Utility sheds, anything two hundred feet, two hundred square feet or less, nonoccupied is two hundred dollars.
Pardon?
It's twenty-five, I'm sorry.
That was the cost, that was the cost of the shed.
Ross, I was trying to get more money. It's twenty-five for a...
If you're working a building, boy, you want to be sure to get your money. I know all that big money you're making.
What it really does is pretty much in line with other communities. The last building fee was revised in May of nineteen seventy-seven, so... No? When?
The last one that I saw went from zero to five dollars.
The only problem I have is that utility shed, twenty-five dollars, a lot of money for somebody to put a utility shed in their backyard. I think you're going to have a lot of problems with it because people are going to put them there anyway, so you're going to have to be on watch for it.
Well, that's only a build. I mean, if you buy one and install it, it won't be anything.
Same thing?
Why?
In other words, if you buy one already built, no charge?
We're not building any. Got it? Yeah, you're right, okay. Any other kind of... All, motion please?
Some move.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Chair. Next item, please.
Next item is open north, uh, North Bay fishing.
Yeah, there's been some concerns over lacking access to North Bay fishing. We talked about this previously and we've decided that it will be opened officially. If, however, there is any problem with building a dump in the trash, then it could be closed again because that was a problem with the past tournament. Okay, we don't really need a resolution on that, that will be open.
George, will there be another loading deck for boats or putting in water?
Yeah, that's in the works now, uh, my... Yeah. That's, trying to work out a way to open it for camping and, you know, for boat access and everything. They have to do a revision on the fees in order to be able to support the cost, so that we'll probably be excited by next meeting. Next item, please.
Next item is the, you ever say county for some years?
Right. Do you want to hold that until the next meeting until you decide what you want to do?
Yeah.
Hold that then for the next meeting. Next item, please.
Uh, sewer problem, the old problem, I think that's Mr. Don Gurus.
Well, I thought it was, but it's Mr. Hoff's. We worked on it together, we went down there this week. And we noticed that the water running down the hill is deteriorating the road. Down on the road, it's leaving a lot of debris, gravel, and pavement and all kinds of stones, sticks, whatever, right in front of this building. And we don't feel that, Dave, and I don't feel that, you know, that should continue. It's been fighting this for quite a few years and it's fallen on deaf ears. And what it needs is two catch basins at the cost of about nineteen hundred dollars. And I think with the revenue that he pays, the city and state tax, we owe it to him to put these catch basins in.
Not that, it's only going to get worse, right?
Right, and also not only is it deteriorating the road edge, it's also trying to work its way in... Right, and also not only is it deteriorating the road edge, it's also trying to work its way into his building. The last storm we had, it was almost a foot of runoff sludge and stuff that had built up in front of his door, which it took him a while to remove. And as the side of the road deteriorates, that problem will become greater. And eventually he's gonna have it inside his building and we'll be liable for that. Twelfth Street.
Resulted the Water and Sanitation Commissioner will be authorized to install two new catch basins in the storm line at the reserve, we own a property located on East Twelfth Street, an estimated cost of nineteen hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Here. Next item please.
Memorial Day Salute, Jen?
Yeah, this is a letter that we got from the Memorial Day Salute Committee regarding our bed tax dollars. In the past, we have given them, uh, money from our bed tax dollars for advertising the Memorial Day Salute. And I think last year, Brian Campbell came before us and asked for money to bring a military band in. And what, what the committee is asking for again is a, is a similar amount of money for that purpose.
Yeah, this is a very extensive program that we're on, it's on, will attract a lot of people and hopefully people will spend money here, so it's well supported. They're asking for twenty-five hundred dollars. Any comment?
Just want to, Ken, are they working in conjunction with the chamber, either stores and things also to try to promote more people into the city?
We'd be really happy to work with them on it.
I think it would be to their advantage to contact you, more bodies makes way for it.
Do you know how much money we've taken in for the past year on, on the bed case?
It's about twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand.
We got twenty, we got twenty thousand.
And maybe you can contact them and, uh, see if there is some area of cooperation there because I'm sure there's, you know, your organization helping it, but it's not quite enough.
In the past, I know that, that the group has worked with, uh, with, we forget, Madeline.
Motion? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Here. Next item please.
Unsafe and vacant structures.
Well, really I'm prepared for a motion on this, but this one, the problems that the city's facing and I've recommended to the council and we'll do some research on a, uh, let, help the city attorney on a amendment to the code, give the city the right to raise some of these structures, I guess, it's gotta be a pretty serious problem. And, uh, that's one of the requirements to the code, they're indicating for code enforcement, which is some, some of the things I've heard here. We don't really have a more, uh, resolution ready at this time and hopefully we'll have by the next meeting.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'd like to commend Steve Long on the job that he's doing. Uh, in my ward, I had a call on three houses that were unsafe. One of them that was, uh, caused by fire and he acted on my call the same day and made contact with people.
I, Your Honor?
Yes.
I would likewise like to commend him. I know that he has done what he can do with the property in my ward across from Karen's Mini Mart that is, uh, close to being half down, I would say, to Rook's Cave yet already and I don't know what else we can do with it. But he has put signs up, uh, not condemning it, but saying that it is a problem and I appreciate that. And I have one other thing that I'd like to ask Mr. Graham if I could. Buck, yeah, I have a couple of calls about stumps of trees that were cut one to two years ago in the ward and the people want to know what's going to happen to the stump removal and when they're gonna be gone.
I think we should do that if it's possible.
Can I turn on any cameras or, uh?
Based up.
Make that meeting, you can have a tie in the vest. Okay.
Yeah, we also have a, a tree list that's out there too that we should have pulled in.
Maybe we can do both.
Yeah. Buck, do you have a list of trees that were cut where the stump still exists and you could add somewhere?
We got some of them, yeah. Not all of them.
Would you get us all a copy of that, please? Resolution for that.
Joe?
At Jerome Street, I don't know, yes.
Okay.
Joe has a resolution. Result of the traffic department conducting motor vehicle traffic study on Jerome Street, feasibility of a yield sign. I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Here.
I've got one of those as well, and I don't know if I can pull it back though. Uh, this is for one on West First Street and Broadway and Joe can read the, the resolution.
Result of the traffic department conducted traffic study for westbound traffic at the intersection of West First and Broadway for the feasibility of a no right-hand turn sign, turn on red sign.
This is because, uh, about, uh, up to fifty or sixty percent of the people living in the middle apartments walk and they don't drive. And, uh, most of them like a shop or West Side Merchants over there, they're having a hard time getting across, uh, Broadway to get over to the West Side business district. So I'd like to look into the feasibility of, of no right-hand turn sign there.
Any comment? Okay.
People coming up the bridge.
Right.
I believe it, it might have been done some time ago. I think they, they looked into it when, um, peril was all in. And we're gonna be investigated and, uh, maybe we have to talk to DOT or something. But, uh, the first thing is that they get the study done and open their, uh, report it's around.
Unfortunately, one of our problems, that has to be referred to the New York State DOT. Irrelevant of anything we would even come up with. It has to go to them first and they tell us, which was the situation before.
Oh, I was under the impression that we had to do the study first and then.
Well, DOT does, uh, state highway, that's Route three or forty-one.
Can I work with Lieutenant Allen on that then?
Yeah, sure, just in terms of making the resolution and Lieutenant Allen will send a cover letter and contact him by phone, tell him it's coming with a copy of your resolution, uh, and then they, you know, they have got it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask Captain Figure Officer Allen, one of them, how to read and tell about the two proposed traffic studies. We had one on Rochester and First and the other on Emery, Emery Street.
Rochester and First, uh, that's, uh, relative to three-way stop signs, if I remember searching correctly. One of the first steps to do this is a vehicle traffic count. We were working with, uh, with Nessus and our counters. First time they're out, we've been on Bird Street, the first week we put them out, we put them on a Tuesday and it snowed like hell Tuesday afternoon, so we had to pick them up. And that shot that, you have to do a count Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, loves the figures. So, uh, we had four locations up there we had to cover and then it took, it took us two weeks to do that. Your, your intersection was the next in line and we do vehicle counts with the counters as a matter of procedure. Unless there's something difference, a major difference in importance is designated by the council. We do them by order that we receive. Yours has been around the longest in history.
And the one on, on Emery Street, uh, are we ready to make some kind of a? No, I didn't. That's what I, that's why I'm asking.
I did, interesting. I put, uh, Will Apple with a copy of about twenty-five in all the light things in my response in your basket. We can have them.
I do not have.
I still have mine.
Okay, good. I will be in touch with you then as soon as I receive.
Yes. Has there ever been a study made on traffic going south on West First for an arrow to make a left turn? On Broadway and West First.
You mean the rest of the road?
You mean the light?
Light?
A light, I mean an arrow in the light, a green arrow.
A green arrow on West, on West First Street and Broadway?
You mean a light?
What were the bridges?
You mean a delayed bridge?
West Side.
West Side and Broadway, it's green.
Well, I'm, I'm still not sure what intersection we're talking about.
West First and Broadway.
Yeah, Broadway. There is an arrow there.
No, not to turn left or to go south.
In front of the congregation. Yes, there is.
I do it all the time.
I check that tomorrow, I swear there is a green arrow.
I need one on Madison Square.
No? Gee, I get three of them all the time. Going east. Going east. Going south. Left onto Broadway.
He's talking about the fast green light up here in Second Broadway.
Takes a while sometimes. Yeah, you're right, that's not a bad idea.
You're gonna have an accident because people have to take risks now.
I agree with you. Ward, that's yours too?
Howard, Howard, can, can we include that, the same thing with the DOT or?
Yes, I'll see why not.
Yeah, why don't we include it together and we'll send them both with a package.
Remind that resolution, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody hear your eye?
Okay. I said they joke.
Everybody hear your eye? Remind that resolution, fire resolution, we include that left turn on the green arrow at West First and Broadway.
I want to add that, to avoid that, I go down Fourth Street, West Fourth, to the traffic light at, um, Fourth and Broadway and then come down so I don't have to.
Not a bad idea, I'll remember that.
I, I'm scared to death to do that because you're taking your life.
Uh, that is, that is a bad one. Okay, we'll make a study out of both of them.
What about I am second, that works?
Yeah.
Read the resolution.
Yeah, I assume I figured out.
We're talking about, uh, we want a left, we want a left turn on green at the intersection of West First and Broadway.
Traffic going south.
Have they anything done with the night in Second? The night is great, that's not part of the highway.
Result of the traffic department conduct a, uh, traffic study for westbound traffic at the intersection of West First and Broadway for the feasibility of a no right-hand turn on red sign and also to include a left-hand turn and green arrow at the intersection of West First and Broadway for southbound traffic. And these traffic studies will therefore be forwarded to the New York State Department of Transportation along with this resolution.
Motion?
Please correction in there, Joe, it's not for southbound traffic, it's for eastbound traffic that was headed south.
Yeah, uh, southbound. You devil, dude. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Here. Next page. Mayor?
Can I be excused?
While we're talking about traffic studies, I had one that was ongoing, uh, southbound. And I've gotten some more complaints about that. Is there any status on that?
We're waiting for the council again. We, we have some traffic counts, we only have two hours, so it decides how much.
One of the residents mentioned to me that, uh, there were policemen over there, but, but they were in police vehicles. I wonder if we could put the unmarked vehicle to try and catch somebody speeding over there. Also, uh, there was talk of signs being ordered for children playing and have, have they come in yet? Are they still on order?
Sure.
You know, you can save a little money by keeping it cool in here, it's so hot in here.
Honey, I used to argue with the engineering department about that for eight years when I was sitting on the bench up there. I think it's hot down here, y'all sit up there. It's hot here in the summertime and cold in winter. And they've been trying to fix that heating system ever since the place was built without any success. The only answer is probably a new building and I don't think. I'm not advocating. Yeah, we got one more. While we're doing these traffic studies, we'll add one more.
Okay, result of the traffic department conduct a motor vehicle traffic study on South First Street between forty-one and Route three for the feasibility of one-way traffic only in a southerly direction.
This is to explore that feasibility of making South First Street one-way traffic where, uh, traffic is increased considerably for northbound traffic. If you're on forty-one, they make a left turn onto South First Street at that intersection and let me tell you, that is a very dangerous situation. I don't know how many times I've gone through there myself and watched that traffic pile up, uh, the, uh, forty-one traffic that's northbound waiting to make that turn. And then people coming off of South First Street, some making a left turn, some going straight. It's a, it's a mess. So I thought we'd give that a shot and see if that, uh, makes any sense. Honey, I'm not in favor of making Fulton a ghost town like Phoenix is. You know, Swiggle has two main thoroughfares like Fulton and they have traffic that's just as heavy as ours and they are thriving city. And one of the reasons why is because the traffic does go through that city. Now, if you want to kill Fulton, that's the way to do it, believe me. Pardon me? We got enough problems in Fulton without giving it the coup de grâce or whatever that is. Have a motion please. Mayor, I have one more thing.
We got a motion, we got a motion on the traffic. Sorry, I thought you were.
Are we shy, somebody have a motion?
I know.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Close by no. Here. Anyone else have anything you want to bring before the council? Ross?
We met with them, uh, last Wednesday and some of the things that, uh, we came up with, I thought were pretty equitable and both sides were happy with. Uh, we still have the issue of insurance to, to meet about and we're meeting about that tomorrow. We have some ideas that we discussed earlier that, you know, we're gonna present with them tomorrow.
And everybody in council, the softball association, which, uh, you know, remember, rare, that's your, I've been eighteen years there. And every year to be added, they have not properly certification and every dime of the leftover, they just go into the, the, the field, one park, they're giving back to the city. And now council, all this, there's seventy fifteen there, three fifty of whack, plus fourteen hundred dollars of possession here. Those softball associations make accountable for their bills and where. for their bills and whatever it's going to do.
Ross, they are making a condo, they have given, uh.
Ross, they, they've agreed to do that, uh, they've shown us, uh, their numbers, and what they want to do with the, with the field for the upcoming year. They want to make some, some good repairs that, that are needed down there, uh, not only, uh, structurally, but for safety reasons.
They want to watch the person who's walking on the watch party, they're worried about the kids, they're worried about their, uh, bills, and they're making, well, they don't care, the first month of the year, by the way, it's pitch, they care as well, first month of the year, the rest of the year.
Do we know? Anybody else have anything?
George? I'd like to say something. Uh, I'm not sure how much money this will save the city, but it is, it would be a cost-cutting measure, um, I've done a little thinking on it, and, you know, we're all trying to save money. Uh, I think it would be a good idea, possibly if, uh, the department had said, I, city people who take vehicles home, leave them here overnight, and then drive their own vehicles down here, and then, uh, go out and to work from here.
I already answered your question. You're right, John.
Yeah. I think that they like to look sections with the, uh, fire post department.
I think the D C O commission should be allowed to do it too, because he is living in Congress, but, yeah, I did it last week. I think you had the previous suggestion.
I didn't know if you had, or no, I just started bringing it up, okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one thing, Mayor, I could thank Cheryl Ritchie publicly, and Spencer and yourself for the work, I know there was additional hours spent here to work on preparing for the, uh, field, the community residents.
Thank you, John, I, Cheryl and Spencer deserve special moments because they do a lot of work, spend a lot of their time. Dan?
I wonder if there could be some consideration in going in, having a cleanup day, some kind of day, rumpers, there, recycling, all that, maybe if it doesn't make a day, maybe for not to clean up, keep off the yard.
We need citywide, Sharon. I've already asked, uh, that as soon as he has, and some of our time available to try to do that, yes, what?
We tried that a couple of years ago, we tried one side of the river for one week, one side for the next week, and we no more than got the west side, Don started on the east side, and it looked like he hadn't even touched the west side. So, I mean, it was confusing, because everybody would put it out the following week, as we advertised it for a whole week, it didn't work.
Well, let's try it again. Yeah, I agree with you.
We should, you know, advertise it also, start it.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask, talk to you another question, I, uh, look, is there, is there a specific day in each ward that we pick up, uh, the proceeds of people taking care of their lawns, the architrack, or whatever might be in each ward, or is there one day a week that we do a side of the river, or what is?
No, right now, we got one crew on each side of the river, that's all the help we got right now, and we're trying to do it, this isn't putting it out.
And is where you get to it, or like right now, yard?
Uh, Buck?
Why don't you, uh, see if you can schedule a time, and let me know, and we'll advertise it.
Cherry, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't know how many of us are guilty of the fact of turning left on the red, uh, the only way to get through the light off the night street, uh, northbound on four eighty-one, like every day, everyone turns that left, can only make that left turn on a red light, jumping the, uh, northern, southern direction.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
Is there anything can be done about that?
No, maybe I'll add that to the traffic study.
Jack, didn't we need to do a traffic study over there at one time?
I already answered about that, and they said we'd have to widen the intersection, and take some of the sidewalk to do it.
I think Shirley Franco brought that up.
Yeah, we've sent several requests to DOT, and they've done several traffic studies at intersection. Uh, there's a unique problem there in that, uh, you have several businesses on the north side intersection that need and require their partners, their, uh, New York State DOT has constantly recommended the limiting of their partners to increase times, and, uh, et cetera, for northbound traffic. Uh, their, their last traffic study, which was, uh, last fall, was the same results as every other, basically told us that until the city gets to a point where they do something, uh, there's not much more DOT can tell us.
I understand that appears, you're coming down to Ninth Street, you want to go left?
You can't. The.
Well, I know, you run the rest.
To, to make it, to make it as basic as they possibly can, to allow more time, uh, for what you're referring to, uh, westbound traffic, so you can have more time for that traffic to turn left, uh, you have to take away from the wheel someplace else. Look at a traffic signal like a circle, and for conversation, divide the circle in fours, and each direction has to add amount of time. If you add more to eat, westbound traffic, you've got to take that part of the circle from another direction. Unfortunately, South Second and Ninth Street, uh, has a lot of traffic coming from all four directions, and there's no place to take from to add to westbound.
That's why I want to open up First Street.
Is there a way?
George, data light on Ninth and Second, just like they have on Second and Broadway, but there.
Well, what about just at the way?
If you're going, if you're heading east.
Second and Broad?
Uh, four eighty-one.
Oh, four eighty-one.
Uh, four eighty-one Broadway and Ninth and Broadway.
Yeah, I agree with you.
What about just at the way?
Same kind of light on the Ninth and four eighty-one, they got up on the other corner.
I still say you ought to open up First Street though, so that traffic coming off the bridge can turn right on First Street, and you get a lot of people going down there instead of going on four eighty-one.
What are you going to do with that parking lot?
Well, that wouldn't take up much of the parking lot, that's, that's grossly misunderstood, go down there and check it out yourself, all you're eliminating, all you're eliminating. No way, no way. Go down there, check it out.
You have one way to park it, not to ride the water, and call it.
If you come down through there with that road.
No way.
If you put a road in there, though, when you come out locked, resting, you walk right through the road, but you.
Well, if you do that, business places all over town, though, what's the difference?
You got a sidewalk in between that and road, most of it.
So, what else, what else is new? You got businesses all over town where you're doing that, you got businesses where the only partner they got is on the highway in front of their place of businesses, now why should the lock be any different?
But what I'm saying is, you've got the room to put a road up there and have people walking on that door.
Uh, I, that contractor's telling me you got plenty of roads.
Well, how right is the road before?
Anything else? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn to executive session? Second? All favor, ready, give back.
Aye.
Aye, aye, no. Carry.
In case anybody doesn't know me, I'm Dave McFarland, supervisor of the town of Valney. The reason we're here tonight is, this is an informational meeting on data collection and revaluation. Although it, it covers two subjects, this, this evening will be basically, and the emphasis will be on the data collection process. Uh, presenting, uh, this for the contractor who will be doing the data collection and revaluation will be Phil Murray. Phil is with the Assessment Services Company of Cortland, he is also from Baldwin'sville, he will be heading this whole project up, and we're very fortunate to have a man of his ability and talent and local to be, uh, the project engineer. Uh, hopefully later, Janet LaSalle, who is the, from the Syracuse Office of the State of New York, Division of Equalization and Assessment, she should be here, uh, to answer any questions you might have about, uh, the state of Valney. Thank you.
Before I begin, uh, when you came in, we had a handout, this is a packet of some of the information that we will be covering tonight, does everyone have one of these? Okay. I also brought along with me tonight several other packets, uh, of information, these are published by the State of New York Division of Equalization and Assessment, uh, one of them is the facts about property and tax. This discusses, uh, reassessment as it pertains, uh, to your property tax, it's a very generalized description of the project that we are about to go through, and, again, it will basically follow the program that we are entering into here. We also have several packets covering exemptions, we have veterans exemptions and senior citizens exemptions, these are brief overviews of the exemption programs that are available to U.S. property owners. If anyone would like, they may come up, uh, perhaps at the end of our discussion, and pick up any or all of this information as you would like. We have plenty. As David stated, um, we are about to enter into a data collection and revaluation project here in the town of Valney. I represent Assessment Services Company, we are the contractor that has been hired by your town to conduct the major labor-intensive, uh, portions of the upcoming project. Joining us in this project is basically four major participants, as stated up here, we have the town of Valney. Your town's assessors will, uh, be involved in this project very closely with our staff, with ASC, and the State Division of Equalization and Assessment, and the Oswego County Real Property Tax Office. From the town of Valney, we will be seeking a lot of local knowledge concerning your town, they will help us in, uh, such items as neighborhood delineation, sales analysis, um, local factors that we will find useful in our determination, our analysis of market values here in your town. The New York State Division of Equalization and Assessment, office in Syracuse, New York, will be monitoring the project and offering technical assistance to the contractor and to the town. They have provided the, uh, New York State Real Property Information System, which is the, uh, software that your town will be conducting this project under, they provide the data collection cards, which we will be covering a little later, and they also provide us with the evaluation programs, and the access to their, uh, mainframe computer in Syracuse that we will be using, uh, to conduct this project on. They will also be monitoring the contractual compliance between, uh, the contractor ourselves and the town, so they will be there to ensure that the town, uh, has received what they have contracted for. And the Oswego County Real Property Tax Service, located in the city of Oswego, they will be providing us with such things as tax maps, uh, the initial role that we will be using to build your file with here at the town, uh, they will be providing us with, uh, updates to that file, such as splits and merges and sales, and, um, items such as that. They will also be involved in monitoring the project on behalf of the town. And then comes ourselves, Assessment Services Company, we are a contractor based out of Cortland, New York, we've been doing this type of work exclusively in New York State for a number of years now. The president of our company is Mr. Chuck Sessler, who prior to, uh, forming his own, uh, real estate appraisal company, had worked for the New York State Division of Equalization and Assessment in a capacity similar to Janet LaSalle, monitoring projects and providing, uh, assessment program assistance to local assessors. What I'd like to do tonight is, I will briefly go through the packet of information that I have handed out to you, I have overheads that correspond with, uh, nearly every page in the packet, I will briefly describe the information in the packet, and then at the end of the, uh, presentation, I'd like to open up the, uh, the evening to a question and answer period, answer any questions that you may have. I know there were a couple of people who came in late, I'd like to. Anyone else miss me a second? Okay, our first overhead here is the first page of the handouts that I've given you, and this is a sample of what we call the pre-inspection letter. This is a letter that will be mailed to every property owner in the town of Valney, it announces that we are about to enter into a data collection and revaluation project, it describes the project in a little bit of detail, and then it, uh, basically informs the property owner that they will be visited by a member of our staff, a data collector from our staff, and we will be asking your permission to do a brief inspection of the property so that we may enter the information onto a standardized property record card, which will then be computerized. The pre-inspection letter begins that the town of Valney is conducting a town-wide real property inventory data collection and revaluation program in accordance with the Real Property Assessment Inventory Rule, Section one ninety, Add one point two, of the New York State Code's Rules and Regulations, and Section three oh five of the New York State Real Property Tax Laws. That means we are doing this in compliance with the rules and regulations that New York State has given to all assessing jurisdictions in the state, saying, in order to assess property, you must have at least a minimum amount of inventory on file describing the real property in your town. This project, the data collection portion of this project, is an effort to comply with the New York State Rules and Regulations. Okay, rules require every assessing unit to have inventory data on all real property. Participants in this project will be the town of Valney, the State Division of Equalization and Assessment, the Oswego County Assessment, uh, Oswego County, uh, Real Prop, Real Property Tax Office, and Assessment Services Company will be working together to accomplish the data collection and revaluation project. This notice is to announce that the data collection is about to commence. Assessment Services Company and the town assessor ask for your cooperation in this important project. The purpose of the inventory is to provide a basis for establishing fair and equitable values on all parcels in the town. That means that the data that we will be collecting will eventually, later on in the project, be used to derive our estimate of your property's fair market value. And the thrust of the information here being that we need accurate information to do a good job of valuing your property, so we do ask for your cooperation, uh, allowing us to do a brief inspection of your property, so that we may then proceed to do our best job in the valuation phase of the project. The data collector who visits your property during the next few weeks has been trained in accordance with the New York State Division of Equalization and Assessment Data Collection Procedures. All of our staff members, uh, are experienced data collectors, uh, sometimes during data collection projects, a contractor will hire all new, uh, data collectors, send them through a training class, and then put them out into the field and monitor them. What we will be doing in the town of Valney is using, uh, experienced staff that we have used on previous projects who are part of our permanent crew, such that we will be avoiding the, uh, the training, um, portion of the project, and we'll be using solely experienced people. He or she will carry a letter of identification signed by the assessor and our company, and will ask your permission to make a brief inspection of your home. The letter of introduction and picture identification will be laminated to the data collector's clipboard, and it states that this photo will identify the name of the data collector as data collector for the town of Valney. The information we are collecting is required by the State of New York, if you have any questions regarding this person or the data collection project, please call the data collection office, and then it will have our, our office number here in the town of Valney, and that will be signed by your town supervisor, your town assessor, and probably myself. So, each data collector will be carrying this with them. If any. If anyone shows up at your door without proper identification, either call our office or do not let them in. Our data collectors will have identification, picture identification, on them. Okay? And again, if you have any concerns about the identity of the person at your door, give our office a call, and we will look into it immediately to confirm that, yes, they are a member of our staff, or no, they are not a member of our staff. Again, we will ask permission to make a brief inspection of your home. If this is a residential parcel, say, a sick-built home, generally, we will ask for a brief interior inspection. Takes approximately five minutes. We'll be going in and looking for things such as number of bedrooms, number of kitchens, number of baths, overall interior condition of the home, type of heat, type of fuel used, items such as that, year-built on the home. And then we will go outside, measure the perimeter of the home, measure any additional improvements in the yard, such as a garage, barn, or shed, pools, things like that. Generally, the inspection on a regular residential parcel takes approximately 15 minutes, about five minutes of that being interior and the remainder being outside while we do our sketch and measurements. New York State law does not require that you allow entry onto your property. However, we are asking for your permission and cooperation so that we may obtain accurate information. Here again, no one is required to allow us on their property. We simply ask for your cooperation so that we may in turn do our best job of valuation. We feel that this is obviously in your benefit further on down the line because your assessment will be based on this. And in order for equity to be reached throughout the project, accurate information is a must. If a person, for whatever reason, simply does not want the data collector on their property, they may simply ask us to leave, and we will honor that request. The information will, however, then have to be estimated. And the data collector may just stand out at the road and estimate year-built, room count, size, age, condition, items such as that. Okay. Some of the property characteristics recorded are, and we briefly touched on this, the age, and age of and building's...
Style. Is it an old style? Is it a ranch? Is it a Cape Cod?
The number of bedrooms, bathrooms, total rooms, type of heating system, and fuel type, exterior measurements of the home, and other structures are also recorded. We will then ask the property owner to sign the data collection card to verify your presence when the data was collected. Now, your signature on the card does not tie you down to anything. It's non-binding in any way, shape, or form. It simply states that you were present when the data collector collected the information. At the time of data collection, the data collector will not be able to answer questions concerning assessments or taxes. They're there simply to collect the data and do a description of your property. If you have specific questions about assessments or your taxes, contact either your assessor or our project office, and we'll attempt to help you through that. A question had been raised earlier concerning liability in the case of the data collector. All of our data collectors are covered. Should they injure themselves on the job, the property owner is not held liable for that. They are all covered under workers' comp and our own private insurance. Conversely, all data collectors are also covered by our liability policy. We have a million-dollar liability policy per occurrence should any damage to your property be done inadvertently by our data collector. So we are covered for any such occurrence. At the bottom of the page, if no one is home, the data collector will make exterior building measurements and leave a notice with instructions to call our data collection office at that number for information on how to arrange a return visit to collect the remaining data. And this is a photocopy of this yellow door hanger is also included in your packet. If our data collector finds no one at the home at the time of their visit, they will fill out this card with the date and our project office number and your tax map number identifying your parcel. And it simply states that on this date, we were there, and we found no one home at the time, and would you please call our office to schedule an appointment for an interior inspection at your convenience? Yes, ma'am?
Can you tell me, if nobody's home, what gives them the right to go ahead and measure the outside buildings or even be on the property? We're not there to tell them, yes, they can, and they're just going to go ahead and do the measurements and everything anyway. What gives them the right to do that?
Well, basically, we have asked permission by sending each property owner this form, this pre-inspection letter, stating that we are requesting their permission for this project. If a property owner does not wish us on their property, they are free to call our office in advance and simply say...
Do you think this letter ought to say that?
Well, it does not, obviously. No, it does not. However, the implied indication here is that we are asking for your permission to conduct this project.
Yes, but you also should let everybody know in the town, if they do not wish you to enter, or if they can let you know in advance, so that if you're not home and you're working, because I would assume that a lot of these are going to be taking place when people are not home during the day and working.
We will be working during, you know, nine to five.
If they're going to be entering those properties and the people don't want you on there, you're not even telling them to call any number to tell them, to tell you not to come on the premises.
Okay. That is an interesting point that hasn't been raised in that way before. So it had not been thought of. So I'm sorry, it's not included in the letter.
I think it ought to be.
I will state now, if someone is adamant that they do not wish a data collector on their parcel, they may contact our office, express that wish to us, and we will handle that as an estimate only. Yes, sir?
When do we start this?
Data collection will begin towards the middle of May, I believe. We will be mailing this pre-inspection letter probably the first week in May. We will then conduct data collection several weeks after that, after property owners have received the letter.
Why don't you put that, hold us in a paper, and also a statement if anybody doesn't want you there, they could call a certain number?
We certainly could do that.
Well, they're pretty often a thing, and she's right. If she doesn't want you there, she should have a right to have a way to tell you. If you got a number in the paper, they could call and make out.
Okay.
Are these letters already done?
Pardon me?
Are these letters already done?
They have been printed, yes.
Would it be smart to take and just put an amendment to it?
They're not mailed.
They're not mailed yet, correct?
No, they're not mailed yet, however, they are printed.
Okay, so these are printed, but couldn't you print another form and stick it in along with this one?
Just a notation. And if they're not mailed, there's no reason why it can't be done. And if everybody has it, you don't have to worry about anybody reading it in add or anything else. It'd probably be a lot cheaper to put it in that.
We will explore which of those options we might do. Perhaps the insert would be far more encompassing than even an add in the paper, than each property owner would have that notification.
Well, we're in the same topic. You said that the law does not indicate that you can go in their houses, that the state does not mandate that, which is not part of Section 190, but it does mandate the physical characteristics, which are the measurements and so on. Does the state forbid you from going on the properties to take that, or are you allowed by law to go on the properties for those particular reasons?
No. If a property owner does not want us on the property, we are not open to go and take exterior measurements despite their wishes.
You know the state mandates that you do?
What we are required to do is then estimate the dimensions from perhaps out of the road, which is the public way, simply estimate the dimensions and estimate...
I was just wondering, is the law, why is it you cannot comply with the law? Why are the people allowed to reject the law?
The law is that the town must have this inventory on file. It must make this attempt to collect this inventory. But the law does not state that the property owner has to cooperate with the town's compliance with the law. It's simply the way the law is written.
Does it spell the consequences for such?
No, the law does not spell out the consequences. The consequences of that may be that the estimated information may be incorrect. And if the information is incorrect, it could mean that the assessment would somehow be incorrect also. Now, as a rule, our staff would never do any punitive assessing. They will not put an unfair number on a property simply because that property owner had denied us access to that parcel. That is unprofessional, and we do not engage in that in any way, shape, or form. We will do our best estimate on that property in lieu of access to that property. Yes, ma'am?
Can you do that by comparing it with other properties? Is that what you mean when you say you're going to estimate it, and you don't estimate higher versus lower?
Try to get the estimate right. In cases, say, we're in a subdivision where there were basically four models of a particular home, say, ranches, or capes, or colonials, and we had access to others, we could assume a similar inventory for that person that we were denied access to. And simply through experience, we've been doing this for years now. We generally know numbers of rooms, numbers of bathrooms, numbers of kitchens, based on particular building styles, and we can estimate dimensions.
Whether the landlord gives you a real estate evaluation of the number of rooms, if someone of their own choice comes in and evaluates the home, will you take that as your evaluation symbol on the property yourself?
Well, actually, no. We would prefer not to do that. We would prefer to do the inspection ourselves because our staff has been trained in the specific New York State real property system. And the data collection conventions contained in that system may be different from the experience of a real estate agent, per se.
Excuse me. In New York State, you now have to go to school to become an appraiser. In order to do appraisals, you have to be a licensed appraiser. It's not just real estate agents that are out there doing appraisals on homes any longer.
Let us clarify, there have always been...
That's what we're talking about, the amount of appraisals. We're not talking about a market analysis, which a real estate agent would do.
I believe you referred to the data collection portion, which is what we are discussing here tonight.
Right, but a real estate appraiser does exactly that. All they do is they go in and they get the data of the house, the square footage and everything else, and they came up, they come up with fair market value of that house for that area. Now, what's the difference between them and you?
Consistency, perhaps, that some person does have this appraisal and another person does not. How are we, as a contractor, to know who's got it and who does not? Our job here, what we've been hired to do, is to visit each property within the town and do a consistent, thorough job of data collection.
Okay, but that's not what she asked. She asked, "In lieu of, if I didn't want you to go on my property, and I had a real estate appraisal of my property from a licensed appraiser, why can you not use the data collection from that appraiser in lieu of me letting you on the premises? If I have that appraisal, why can you not use that information versus you coming in and inspecting my home?"
What you can supply is with, during the valuation phase, is the result of that appraisal. However, the information that we collect and the format that we collected on will be handled by our data collectors. If someone does not wish us on their property, that is their prerogative. We will then do our best estimate at that time so that that information can be computerized. We cannot count on someone supplying us with a future appraisal and then taking the information from that and getting it on our file. Time-wise, we are simply constrained in the period of time that we have available to do this in, and we will rely on our data collectors to get this portion of the project done so that we may enter on to other phases. We simply can't rely on someone saying, "Well, no, don't come on my property now. I'll send you an appraisal on this."
Well, how about if you come to the door, and I say, "No, I won't let you in the house, but this is an appraisal that I have," which tells you...
If you gave the data collector a copy of that, they would use that in their estimation of that property. It would aid them in their estimation of that property. And that's pretty much where we would leave that.
Okay. And you will accept that, is that the borderline? We will accept...
We would allow that to help us more, I think. Yes, ma'am.
But what if it was written, "Appraisal is on there for fair market value in that area," because there's been appraisals done in the area by banks, per se. And what they do is they compare other properties to this, and it's all listed there. It's basically the same thing that you're talking about doing.
Yes, it's what we will be doing later on in the project. However, not everyone has these appraisals. And the town can assume that those appraisals are just going to come in and allow them to face their assessment role on them. Generally, it doesn't happen enough to become an issue. Not many people supply us with appraisals. However, if you do not wish someone on your property, and you were to give them a copy of an appraisal that you had done on your property, they would certainly use that information to help them derive their estimate on our property record card. And here again, the important thing is, we need to get this on the state standard property record card with all its conventions. And that's why we will be relying on our data collectors who are trained in this methodology. On the reverse of the pre-inspection letter, we want to state that at a later date, you will receive an inventory report of the information collected to allow you to verify its accuracy. Now, as part of our work here, we will be collecting the information, and then we will be sending back a summary of that information to the property owner so they may check it for accuracy. And if it is an estimate on our part, for either a refusal, or because we found no one at home, you may check to see whether our estimate was correct or not. If you wish to set up an appointment for an interior inspection, if it had been an estimate, you may do so. Or perhaps a year-built was wrong, or the estimate, we estimated two baths, and you actually have one and a half baths. You may correct the erroneous information, send that back to us, and we will correct our files accordingly. And if the information is correct, you may keep it for your own records so that you know what information has been collected on your parcel. Okay. I had mentioned before, for your protection, the data collector will carry an ID card on their clipboard with the photograph of the individual and a letter signed by the assessor and company stating that the person is the data collector working on the revaluation project. And if for any reason you question the validity of the person or the ID they present, call our office for proof of verification. Once again, this is the first step in a multi-step process to improve assessment equity within the town. This is also the first in a number of mailings that you will receive in an attempt to keep you informed about the assessment process and specific data about your property. We look forward to your cooperation in attaining assessment equity in the town. If you are an owner of rental property, please inform your tenant of this information so that they too will know that we're on our way to do this data collection. This pre-inspection letter will be mailed to the property owner, so a tenant may be unaware of this, and we simply ask that you let them know. Here again is a copy of the door hanger that we would leave in case we found no one at home at the time of our first visit, simply letting you know that we were there and asking you to contact our office to arrange for an interior inspection. Next, I'd love to cover the project schedule that we will be following over the next year. Basically, project commencement and public information commencement, this is the phase that we are in now. There will be no data collection training session, as we will be using all of our experienced staff to conduct the project. Data collection basically will begin on the first of May with the mailing of the pre-inspection letter. And probably mid-May, our data collectors will actually be out in the field beginning their data collection work. Data collection is scheduled to run through August. Following the data collection, all of the information collected on the property record card, which we will be covering in a moment, will be computerized. The town has the New York State... The town has the New York State RPS system, real property system, on their microcomputer located here in your assessor's office. The information that was collected in the field will then be brought into the computer, keyed into the computer, and edited for quality checks. We have a number of internal quality checks in the program that allow us to clean up things, potential keying errors, or potential judgment errors that may have occurred during data Simultaneous to the subject file creation, or following shortly thereafter, will be the sales file creation. What we will be doing is analyzing sales that have occurred right here in the town of Bonning. We are not using sales from any other market other than your town to base your future assessments on. What we will be doing is going back probably three or four years and looking at all the sales that have occurred by property class, by use, all the residential sales, commercial sales, agricultural sales. And we will be analyzing those sales, looking for parameters. How much are potential building lots selling for? How much are ranches in a particular neighborhood selling for? How much are farms selling for? How much is tillable land selling for here in the town of Bonning? And we will be analyzing your sales to extract that information that we will be using further on down the line to build a model, a statistical model, for your town that will allow us to value parcels that have not sold in your town based on those parcels that have recently sold.
What about the properties that are up for sale and they can't sell, and they have to drop the price down next to nothing to sell?
Okay. We like to know what the asking price for a particular parcel may be. However, what we will be using in our system are historical sales, sales that have actually occurred. They define the market because that is what a willing buyer has paid a willing seller. If a parcel has not sold yet, we still don't know what the true market value of that parcel is. So if a parcel has been on the market for quite some time, it could be, one, because properties in general are not moving; two, it could be that that particular parcel individually, the asking price may be high on it; or, three, it may have some desirability factor that is preventing that from being sold as opposed to other parcels in the town which may not be suffering from that.
Like the incinerator behind my house?
A local factor such as that could have a very strong bearing on the overall market value of a house.
Would that affect my assessment? If an incinerator behind my house, would that lower my assessment?
If it affects the market value of your property...
It affects that one bad smell.
Okay. That's the kind of thing that we want to discover during the data collection, and you as the property owner should be pointing something like that out to our data collector. We have a note section on our card. That note section is for your use as well as ours. When our data collector is at your parcel, we would like to hear from you what you think is affecting the value of your parcel, be it the physical condition of your property, the particular neighborhood that you might reside in, or any other factor that you feel is affecting the value of your parcel. Our data collector will note that on the card, and that will become part of that valuation concept for that parcel. The field reviewer who ultimately puts a value on that parcel will have that information there in front of him from you that will allow him to take that into account when he is estimating market value.
When they do lot, do they do lot size?
Yes, that's one of the...
Suppose you have a piece of property and there's a toxic waste dump, a nasty property, do they take that also into effect?
We certainly would. As a location factor, as a, as a nearby nuisance, and as a possible deterrent to that property's market value, that's something that we would obviously want to know. And you may be suffering from that particular detriment where someone else elsewhere in the town is not. So that's why we want your input as the property owner, what's affecting your property's value, and the data collector will be asking you that.
Will they find out from other pieces of property, if there is toxic, toxic waste on the property? Will they, will they go out and check property size and dimensions?
Okay. We know the lot sizes for each particular parcel from the roll and from the county tax maps. We know basically where hazardous sites are located in the area. However, we will be asking each property owner for their specific input as to what's affecting their own property. Okay, did that, did that answer that? Okay, following the sales file creation, there will be sales file validation and verification. We will be cleaning up the sales file so that we only include those valid arms-length transactions that represent your market. What will not be included in there would be sales between relatives, distressed sales such as perhaps the settling of an estate, or the dissolution of a business partnership and the disposition of their formerly jointly owned property. We will be looking for arms-length transactions that indicate what a willing and informed buyer paid a willing and informed seller. Yes, ma'am?
When you do the sales file, are you going to, like, average out between 1987 and current date? Are you going to average the, the sale price of those homes from that year to this year? Or are you going to take the 1987 figures?
We will be using a time trending. What we will be doing is obviously using the most recent sales first because basic appraisal theory says that you use your most current sales possible. However, in mass appraisal, we do need a volume of sales in our sales file in order to properly utilize the program. So we will be using a couple of years' worth of sales. What we will be doing is adding a time trending factor to the older sales to try to bring them up to today's market.
I hope you mean down too, because the market has gone down in this area.
If it has, then that's what we will be doing. The way we do that is we analyze repeat sales of the same parcel. Say, a parcel sold in 1991 for $85,000, but it had also sold in '87 for $80,000. We would then calculate the percent of appreciation from '87 to '91, analyze a number of those to try to find out, hey, in the town of Bonning, is property appreciating at a certain level? Is it depreciating? If it is, we will show that. Or has it remained stagnant, in which case we will not be using a time trend. That's all part of the sales file validation and verification process. Yes, sir?
What if you have certain types of property that you can't get a good statistical example for? If you don't have a large enough group of, of any type of property?
We will be looking at property evaluation from a number of different methodologies. If there is not sufficient market indicators available such as sales of similar type properties, we may approach the val, the valuation of that parcel using either a sale or a replacement cost minus depreciation method. What would it cost to build a similar type property today and then depreciate that to its current state of condition of the property, age of the property? If it's a commercial property, we would look at the income-producing capacity of that property, what are similar properties renting for, and then we would try to reconstruct a market value using the income approach to value. We have three approaches available to us: market, income, or replacement cost minus depreciation. And through that, we can generally accomplish a valuation of nearly any parcel out there, save for perhaps the complex industrial and utility parcels, in which case we will be asking the state division of utility and industrial valuation board for their assistance via advisory appraisals for that type of property. Yes, sir?
Is there a formula that you're going to use that relates to agricultural property, specifically grazing land that's used primarily for pasture land and crop generation, that type of thing, as opposed to building lots?
Certainly. We will be categorizing land by its use. For every particular parcel out there, we will be saying, okay, first, how big is this parcel of land? How many acres, or how many square feet, or what is the forage in depth? And then we'll, we will be describing that land by use, and that's something that I will be covering on the property record card. But for an agricultural parcel, say, 100 acres, we will want to know how many of that 100 acres is actually tillable? How much is hedgerow? How much is pasture? How much may be swampland or designated wetlands? And that's the type of thing that we will be asking the property owner for. Obviously, a farmer would know how many acres he's got under tillable, how much is simple support land, how much is pasture land. So that's the type of things that we would like to be getting from the property owner. Obviously, they have the most intimate knowledge of that, that particular land breakdown. Following the completion of data collection, again, we will be mailing the parcel inventory mailer, that is, the data mailer, the summary of the information collected, to you so that you may know what we had collected on your property. Okay? We will then, if there are any particular problems with your parcel, send us back a copy of it with the corrected information. We will update our files with that. Once we feel that we have data collection completed, and the file has been edited, and quality checks have been completed, and data mailers have been returned to us with your responses, we will then begin valuation testing. And here again, that's following up on the sales file creation. That's when we start to find out what specifically is happening here in the town of Bonning's real estate market. Yes, sir?
Will your company editing the files, or who else will be able to do that?
That's a, a program that we will be running on your town's microcomputer. It's internal to the real property system.
Okay, your company...
Is the only one that's going to be changing things?
That is correct. We have control of the file.
You have control of the file, but when you finish and turn it over to our assessors, they will have control. You'll be able to change things as they see necessary as well, is that right?
That is correct.
So you do not have the final say in the assessments. Your assessors do.
That's an important point. We will be doing the labor-intensive portions of this project. However, all of this information that we are collecting, all of the work that we are doing, becomes the property of your town and your town's assessors. And they have the ultimate responsibility for signing the new tentative roll next May first. They will be involved in the data collection and in the valuation phase with us throughout the entire project, and we will be eliciting their input throughout the project. They bear ultimate responsibility for the values that are placed on your property. We give them basically our best estimate of the property. They are free to override it. They are your elected officials, and they will be signing your roll. We will simply be turning all of this information over to them at the completion of our work. Yes, sir?
Will you also, this information you'll be sending us, the homeowners or whatever, will that be your information, or will that be before it's edited or after?
The data notice will be produced after it's edited and quality checked.
So we won't get the actual numbers or whatever that was collected? The person's going to come to, to our house and do the data collection?
Right.
We might be given a copy of that? We'll be given a copy of something that's changed afterwards?
Perhaps, yes. As we are data entering this on the computer, it, it gives a certain range at it. Say, we've got a ranch-style house. Editing is meant to check certain ranges, certain quality controls. And basically, internally in the computer, it will say, okay, most ranches are between, say, 800 square feet and 1,500 square feet. Now, the data collector goes out, and perhaps it's an exceptionally large ranch. It's 2,500 square feet. It's huge, okay? What the editing does is, when we key that in, it may say, hey, look, this might be out of range. Double-check that. Are you making a mistake, or is that actually what belongs on that ranch as far as square footage goes? So it's, it's a way for the computer to check as we enter into it, the quality of the data that we're, we're stating. And it's based on certain ranges and certain expectations that are normal for that particular land, that particular building style, that particular improvement.
Will I be able to get...
A copy of what the assessor, not the assessor, the collector, will I be able to get a copy of what he has when he does the, the collection?
Okay, they will be doing the property record card there at your property. You may inspect that card when they are doing it there. They'll probably be asking you to sign it after they have completed that card, so you will be able to see what we have collected for that there and that.
Yeah, can I have a copy of it from my record?
Well, we obviously don't have a photocopier with us in the field.
Right.
The information will be on file at your assessor's office at the completion of the project. It is there, it's available for your inspection. If you wanted, the assessor could probably give you a photocopy of the card at that time. But while it is our work product, we will still retain control of that card, and it is subject to change. If perhaps, if we had made an error during collection, we may have to go back and change something later on. So it, it's a work product until we hand it over to the assessor. Then it becomes his record, and it becomes public record for you to inspect. And if he wanted a copy, I'm sure he would provide that. Yes, ma'am? You will receive the summary, however.
They didn't give the way we were explaining us about a week ago. What we were told is that you would make, do the collection, make an appraisal on the property, and have a figure. And that figure, that the land, a homeowner could come and look at that figure. This was before it went to the assessors. And then the assessors, if they want to change that figure that you've come up with, they have to come up with some reasons why they're changing that.
Okay, you're talking about the evaluation phase, and we're talking here about the data collection phase. I haven't gotten to the valuation phase yet. Yes, you will be provided with our estimate of your property's value.
Prior to going to the assessment, will you...
Well, no. Your assessor will review all of our values prior to us mailing that notice to you.
Do they change it when you mail it?
Yes.
Do they change it?
Yes. The, the assessor will have a review period following our valuation period in which they may override our values, and then we will change that and mail the value to you during...
How do we know that you're afraid we're not there?
Can we get, is there some way we can get what your opinion or your estimated value of our property is, either prior to or afterwards, so that we can compare the two of what you came up with as a knowledgeable data collection agency in the assessor's office?
We will have a chance to sit down with our staff to go over your particular property's valuation methodology. Included on there would be our estimate of value, and if that had been override, had been and override by the assessor. So yes, that information would be available to you during the informal hearing process, where that value came from.
I'll make a statement that, and I was here a week ago, that's, I was mentioning, I was here a week ago explaining some of the procedures. And after your company goes and does the field review and they place a value, what you feel is a fair market value estimate on that property, what normally happens, and this is what was mentioned a week ago, is that the assessor doesn't change those values, okay? Now, it would only make sense that if the assessor wants to change it, and correct me if I'm wrong, so, that the assessor would go to the contractor and give a good reason to change it. But if he just arbitrarily changes it, I'm sure your company would not defend that value if there's not a good reason why it was changed.
Well, there's... We're in conjunction with the assessor, so that we're basically arriving at a concurrence on the value of the parcel. However, contractually, if an assessor overrides our value, he becomes then the one who would defend that value rather than our staff during informal hearings. However, generally, we're not in, 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 you know, conflicting views on this because we work together to derive the values to begin with. We're working together with your town's assessors in this manner.
Why are you working together? I don't, I guess I, I missed that. If that is they hired you to do it, why should you be working with them until after the fact?
Because they have the local knowledge, and they will ultimately be inheriting this information. This is done, this whole project is being conducted on behalf of your assessors. We are assisting them with...
Okay, your taxpayer, okay? Who doesn't want it done in the first place?
We are assisting them with technical and labor, technical knowledge and labor.
And you're, you're being paid to do a job. That wasn't my question. My question was, why do you have to incur with them if you're the people that are responsible for it until after the fact?
In other words, if you're so knowledgeable in what you do, I, I am a real estate broker, okay? If you are so knowledgeable in what you do, if this is your area of expertise, and you're pulling records from 1987 on forward to today's data sales that are out there, you should not need the local assessor to tell you anything. Those records are there, you can compare them, you have computers, you put it in, it spits it out, it gives you evaluations of properties. Plain and simple, why do you need the assessor's opinion involved with yours?
Because a great deal of appraisal work is judgment. And a great deal of the judgment may be assisted and aided by the local knowledge of the assessor. This is the way that these projects have always worked. We work in conjunction with the state, the county, and the town in cooperation.
You're absolutely right that it is, in fact.
Yes.
And it should be your opinion, not theirs until after you have done your job.
But it's important to remember who signs the roll.
Not till after the fact.
Not till after the fact. What we're looking for is an unbiased.
That's what this is called, unbiased.
County of what your property is worth before the assessor gets involved. I mean, if I go out and do an analysis on a house, I don't go ask ten other realtors what they think that house is worth. I do my job and then if I'm in question of what I've done, I go to my broker and ask him or I go to another realtor and ask their opinion. If it's wrong, yes, then there's justice that's been made. But before it just goes, before it goes to one who's making the decision, this office shouldn't be the ones that, if they're so expertise, they should be able to do it without anybody else.
Well, I can tell you that the local knowledge and the assistance of the assessors is important. We will do our job independently. We will derive our estimates of market value. However, the assessor is responsible for the tentative roll that is filed. He has the final say over the values that are placed on the file. If he wishes to override one of our values, he does have that justification.
How can you do that job?
And it will be noted.
How can you do it? Can you do that job with him looking over your shoulder and making suggestions at that point in time?
I think you're misconstruing this, sir. It's not a fact of him looking over our shoulders and telling us what to do. Our field reviewers will be out there based on the information that we have collected and the analysis that we've done. They will be doing their best estimate. However, your assessor does have a chance to review that after we've handed it over to him if he wishes to make changes to that.
Don't we argue with the fact after?
Right.
And the argument is, why does he have to be looking over your shoulder at the time you're doing it, prior to you coming up with the numbers? After you come up with the numbers and he looks it over, then, yes, fine and mean, then get his input. But initially, you shouldn't have to have his input. And he shouldn't be there looking over your shoulder to give you any input.
Are you saying that your assessor shouldn't be monitoring what we're doing?
Yes, he'll be coming from.
That's exactly what I'm saying. That's what you're hired for.
You're the professional. You grow up for a living.
Doesn't he need to know what we're doing though? Shouldn't he be watching what he's doing?
That's the case that we should have him do it, not you.
We will keep the message, you're from us.
Look.
Yes, sir.
Part of the reason that you are here is because the assessors have, as far as I am concerned, refused to do what you have been hired to do. Am I wrong on that?
That's absolutely not true.
That is not true?
Absolutely not.
That is absolutely.
Absolutely not.
I was on the board the last two years. They've known since nineteen eighty-seven that this data collection had to be done. Physical characteristics, not the full-fledged that you're going to be doing.
And I was on the board a long time before you were, my friend. And let me tell you something. We knew that this had to be done. We were getting ready. We were waiting for the state to come in. And at the point when, and I pushed that.
Three years before I came on board.
I pushed that two years before. And I will tell you that this is something that the assessors do not, and they're not full-time people. They do not have full-time jobs. They're working with this company. This company does.
I would like, I don't want to turn this into a brawl. I would like, this is not your concern, but I have, I don't know what the assessive job is and I'm not sure that anybody in this room does. But part, my understanding is, you are here because the assessors cannot, will not, or feel that they should not. Do you agree with that? Will not, cannot, or feel that they should not.
No.
Do this job. And I think that what these people are saying to you is, we want to see what you have to say before the assessors tell us what they want us to see. I believe that that's.
We will be doing this work. Your assessors will not be doing this work. However, part of our contractual requirement to your town is that we will also teach your assessor what we're doing.
Fine.
We are not operating in a vacuum. We will show him what we're doing. We will allow him to become a part of this whole project. We will do our work independently. If the assessor needs to override a value for whatever reason, it will be noted as an override.
Can you show the homeowner that's your evaluation before you give it to the assessors? Can't you send out a statement to the homeowner saying, this is what we feel your property's worth, prior going to the assessors? That's what we're asking.
No, actually, the assessor's review of the information will occur after we've completed our valuation and prior to those notices being sent out.
Okay. We're asking you to do it differently. We're asking you to notify homeowners first.
And I apologize, but it cannot be done that way because that would require multiple mailings of that assessment notification. And there's no provision for that in the New York State real property system. It's, we simply cannot do multiple mailings of that value estimate. It's done in one run and updates the file accordingly.
And how do we know that the assessors have changed what you have done? We have no notification of that, right? It's basically to make a change after you make the termination. There's no way the homeowner's going to know that. Is that correct?
Yes, there is. During the informal hearing, you will know how that value has been derived. And then it becomes.
That's the fact.
That's the fact. It's no good.
It's not good enough, okay?
The system has been laid out.
The system procedures that, I understand that. Systems are made, systems be changed, okay? We're the people paying. Are we not?
However, the scheduling of the contract is something that through experience has been derived. It's been mandated by the state this way. This is the.
Who drew the contract on?
Where is the contract? Where, can we see the contract then? If you've got a contract, we'd like to see the contract.
I do accept the contract.
If it is a contract.
If you wanted to see a copy of the contract, you should contact your town supervisor.
And who drew it up?
The request for proposal was basically drawn up by the state, sent out by the town.
Can I interject for an important moment here? I'd like to introduce Janet Lozal, who is from the New York State Equilization Assessment. And thank you for being here tonight, Janet. She's the one that briefed us last week on this very thing. And for the record, Janet, could you tell us that in nineteen eighty-seven in November, this town was notified that section one ninety was not, was a law and it had to be complied with in X number of years, which I believe was a year at the time? Is that not the case?
I don't know if the town was notified.
I'm telling you, we were notified. I have the letter to that.
I didn't have a copy of that whatsoever, but that was when the assessive inventory rule was passed.
It came off, right.
That was, that said that the town had to have on file enough physical characteristics to value the property by one of the three approaches to value, whether it's cost, market, or income. And then the state started making field checks to see what kind of inventory each town had. And the town of Bonney obviously did not have any inventory for each parcel. So, they did not comply with the assessors inventory rule. The state board made a ruling that town of Bonney had to comply with assessors inventory rule by this year, June first, nineteen ninety-two.
But that was just last year. They said we had to comply by this year. But they were notified five years ago.
I can't tell you about the notification.
Okay, we were notified five years ago. And before I came on the board in nineteen ninety, they had been notified, but it had not been done. So, that's what brought us to this point, as Dr. Kessler mentioned, as the fact that you are being hired now to cover up for what wasn't done before. You're also doing full-fledged data collection, which is not mandated by law. The physical characteristics is. There's a difference there as well. And that's what we're facing right now. The new town board has decided they want the full-fledged data collection and the rebound. So, just for everyone's information, that's where we stand. But this was a law in November of eighty-seven. It should have been done then. Why it wasn't, maybe Mr. Ridgway can explain.
Absolutely, I can.
Please do. Please do. Because when I came on board on this town board, it hadn't been done. They were still dragging their feet on it, waiting for money for the full-fledged data collection, which the last town board did not approve of, mainly because, I've talked to Janet about this, we're concerned with government getting their foot in people's door, which you're saying that you don't have to let them in. We know that. But the scenario created with that is that if you don't let them in, you go to grieve it. If you don't feel your assessment's fair, you don't have a leg to stand on. So, therefore, you're putting people in a predicament that they cannot do anything about. And we have to go with whatever assessment's given based on the procedure you're using, which we thought was unfair, which is why we did not go with it. We were waiting for the state to mandate full-fledged data collection and they didn't do that. We did authorize the physical characteristics two years ago. We provided money for that, but our assessors refused to do it. And that's where we're at now. I just wanted that on the record so that everybody knows. Now, maybe Mr. Ridgway can explain why it wasn't done before.
Well, I just want to say that I feel, I feel kind of bad for you because I don't think you really know the background. And everybody seems like they're attacking you, which is not really what they're doing, but there is a history to why you are here today.
Right.
And one of the things that you said was that, you know, you want this assessment to be fair and equitable. I know we all do. But see, we're afraid that it's not going to be, even though you're doing it fairly inequitably and they're telling you, well, look, we should raise this for a certain reason. I mean, we were told ours was raised to get my husband's attention. That's not a good reason. I know you wouldn't buy that. But I don't think maybe you've been educated on the history of what's happening and what you're walking into. And there's only a handful of people here, but you're going, you may be walking into a real.
I will state to you that all the work that we will be doing is above board. We will be documenting ourselves very carefully throughout this project. And all of that information will be available at the completion of our work. It will be handed over to the town. It will become public record and you, the property owner, will have access to that information. You can come in, you can see what information was collected, how it has been valued, who valued it. And if you have a grievance, you then have the information you need to file that grievance, be it on erroneous data, overvaluation, or for whatever reason, inequities throughout the neighborhood, whatever. So, this is, in effect, your chance to, one, introduce new equity into your role and become involved in the assessment of your property. You will have the information available to you to know whether you are properly assessed. And if you're not, you will have the information available to you to fight your assessment. So, it goes both ways. This really is to the benefit of the property owner. And as I said, this is above board. We will be providing you with that information.
How do you fight it? You didn't let them in your house, though.
Well, Howard, if you disagree with the assessment, you can let them in your house later.
But if you never want to let them in, then you have no way. Then you have no way of proving that you do not have what they said you have, Howard. You don't want to do it. You must be hiding something.
I know. I know. It's over with now.
I don't want to let them in. I don't have to let them in.
We do have progress. We do have time, so. You know, some of us in this room have filed grievance with the state and have yet to be heard on this issue. So, it isn't always that simple.
With the state, in other words, a small claim? Okay, money for the small claims hearing officers ran out last year. I do know that.
And we're paying.
Yes, ma'am, I do realize that. As a contractor, I don't have a good answer for you there. Yes, sir?
I have a question. We have a realtor or two here. So, truthfully, while they're selling property, can they put a value on a house if they don't look at the inside of it?
Are we putting a value on the house or are we putting a value on the content? There's a difference.
No, I'm not on the house.
But I asked you a question. Are we putting a value on the house or are we putting a value on the content?
The content is made of oak or is it made of plywood?
Okay.
Something that's not things of that, I'm repaying.
Okay. First of all.
I bought a house in Bonney about five years ago and I decided to get. I decided to get it insured. And I called two insurance companies and they asked me about twenty questions. And I answered them and they did not come out and look at my house and they didn't ask me whether it was fine or oak. And they both come up with a couple of thousand dollars of the value of my house and I got the insurance through that. They were not concerned about what was in the house. They were concerned with how big it was, how many bedrooms it had, whether the basement was finished, things like that. They did not go inside my house. And it seems to me that this town ought to, this man here ought to be able to evaluate my house just by asking me some questions, even without coming out there and looking at it, okay? And if I can't prove that I don't have a gold mine in my basement, you want me to prove that I don't? I don't understand that rationale. I don't understand that.
First of all, what you're talking about is a replacement cost estimate, not a fair market valuation. What did it cost to rebuild the home? Secondly, to do it properly.
There's a relationship there between the value of the house and the replacement.
Secondly, the agent should, to evaluate it properly, see the poll, take measurements, find out what means are there. Ask what's on the form.
The only two that I've got, didn't.
Most companies say, have the agent seen the risk? And when you sign the thing, you say, I have inspected the premises. Whether the agent did it is another story.
Well, they didn't do it. My, it's true. I'm coming to Texas just for one, for the first part, but I thought that they came up with a pretty good value of the house and so what I paid for it.
As far as the standard is supposed to be.
But I don't understand what you're arguing here. You're trying to find.
You're saying they did it without looking at it.
I'm telling you, they, they came up with a very good estimate of what my house was worth. You think so? I know what I paid for it. And the town jumped on that and raised my taxes based on that.
I bet the bank wouldn't give you the money if it didn't raise that, would it?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just, I'm not a bank. I'm not a realtor. But I'm a taxpayer here, by gosh. And I know that I'm paying a lot more taxes than some of the people in this room who own the same house that I own. Yes, and that's the issue. Fine, but you don't have to come down my basement and look to see what kind of heat I have to put a value on my house. You don't have to do that.
So, I have a few more things that I would like to cover here before we open this up again. Two, some more questions and answers. If I could just get through the remainder of my presentation here, I'd be glad to open it back up momentarily. I'd like to finish up the scheduling for the project that we're involved in here. Okay? Following evaluation testing and valuation production, this call, our field reviewers, our staff appraisers, will be taking our assembled information, that's the property record card and our computerized estimates of market value, going back out into the field, visiting each parcel again, not for an interior inspection, but simply placing ourselves in front of that parcel again, inspecting the data for correctness, and then determining our estimate, again, our estimate of market value. Okay? We will do that for all parcels in the town and bring those in and computerize those. Following our field review of values, your assessors do have a period of time available to them in January for them to go out and review values. And if they feel they have to change a value, they are allowed to override a value that is noted on the computer documentation, noted, it is an assessors override. And then the defense of that particular value does then fall upon the assessor because that was their value, not ours. Okay? I realize some of you may have a problem with that scenario, the way that the project[1673.66] the way that the project is built. However, that is the standard in New York State. That is how these projects are conducted. The taxpayer's full disclosure notice production and analysis will start early in February, and at that point, we will be computer generating a notice that will be mailed to the property owner that tells you our estimate of your property's current full market value. And it will have a comparison of the tax effect of our new full market value based on your old fractional assessment and our new full value assessment based on the most recent budget year. Here's what you did pay under the old assessment. Here's what you would have paid using that same known budget, using our full value market assessment. And we will tell you the difference in tax dollars, be it an increase, a decrease, or whether it remains relatively the same. Prior to the release of the full disclosure notices, I will be having another public meeting similar to this, where I will be discussing valuation per se. Tonight's meeting is basically dedicated to the data collection portion of the project. I will also be holding another public meeting to explain the valuation and the full disclosure notice portion of the project, and then the following informal hearing period where members of our staff will by appointment sit down with the property owner and go over the valuation of your parcel with you. We will show you our valuation documents. We will show you where our numbers come from. And then we will listen to you. We will listen to what you have to say about your parcel. We will note that down. If you think that we've overvalued you for some reason, be it data or neighborhood attributes, whatever, we will note that down, and then we will go back out and reconsider our value based on what you told us. This is an opportunity for you to find out what we've done, how we've done it, and to actually have some input. We'll go back and reconsider it based on what you told us. If it requires a reinspection of your house based on some new physical deterioration that may have happened between data collection and, and the informal hearing process, perhaps, you know, it had been a tough winter and you had roof damage or storm damage, whatever, and you feel that, you know, your home is depreciated, you want us to come back, take a look at it, we'll do that. If you want us to come back and reconsider it, we'll do that. The full disclosure notice mailing will be in the end of February, and the informal hearings, including our field-related activities, will be basically in March and the beginning of April. Okay? Following each informal hearing, we will go, be going back out, checking any information that you've asked us to recheck on that parcel, rechecking the value, reconsidering the value if you feel it's necessary. You will then receive an assessment change notice that is written notification of the result of that informal hearing. We will tell you the new value that we placed on your parcel or whether there was no change to the value placed on your parcel. Following the assessment change notice production will be the filing of the May 1st, 1993 tentative roll. Your assessor will then be sitting with that roll and evaluation documents. You may come in, you may inspect them again. If you feel that the number on your parcel still is not correct, based on what we've done, you may then file for grievance, which is now the fourth Tuesday in May, and carry on through grievance or small claims tertiary if at all necessary. Okay, so that's basically the schedule that we will be following over the next year, beginning with data collection, entering into valuation and field review, and then our informal hearings of those values. Okay, you have in your packets there a copy of a blank property record card. This is a residential or a farm vacant property record card. This is the standardized format that we will be collecting data on, and this contains the inventory necessary to comply with the inventory rule as required by the state. This is basically a very brief description of your property. It's broken down into sections. Over here would be the parcel identification section that identifies the parcel, the tax map number, the owner, the location, the current use of the parcel, be it residential, farm, vacant. Over here, we have some brief site information, which covers zoning, sewer, water type, what utilities are available to the site, site desirability. If this is located next to a hazardous waste site, then site desirability would be inferior. If it were, you know, a gorgeous panoramic view overlooking, you know, a lake or something like that, it might be a superior site. So each site is evaluated on its own merits or detriments. This particular overhead is from an older card that has been changed and modified for the RPS system. The one you have in front of you is the actual card. It would have neighborhood type, be it rural, suburban, urban, et cetera, and a neighborhood rating, below average, average, above average, and then a road type, non-improved, unimproved. Down below, we have the land breakdown section. That's where we will be recording how large the parcel is and what land type is found here, be it primary building site, a secondary site, an undeveloped building lot, simple residual land, tillable, pasture, woodland, wasteland, muck, waterfront, orchard, real land, vineyard, wetland, or leased land. Those are the major categories that we will be breaking your land down into. We have the notes section on the card. This is the opportunity for the data collector and you to jot down any information, not standardized already somewhere else on the card, such as neighborhood factors, leaky basement, old rotted window sills, leaking roof, noisy neighbors, whatever you feel may be affecting the value of your parcel. Let the data collector know this. They will note it on the card so that it may be used in the evaluation of your parcel. That's the information on the front of the card. On the rear of the card, we will be collecting the buildings and structures themselves. We have the residential building section where we describe the building style. Is it a ranch, a raised ranch, a cape, colonial, old style? We'll collect the story heights. How many floors are there? The exterior wall material, the year built, the number of kitchens, the number of bathrooms, the number of bedrooms, any fireplaces, the heat type and the fuel type, whether there's central air present, the basement type. Is it a crawl basement? Is it a fully excavated basement? Is there no basement whatsoever? If there's a basement garage, the capacity of the basement garage. The overall condition of the structure. Is it in poor condition? Is it in average condition? Is it brand new? And then the overall grade, that is the quality of construction. Is it of economy construction, or is this an architecturally unique home, custom-built home of the finest quality materials? All of those are things that we need to describe a building, a house, properly using our valuation system. Below that is the, the building area section. That's where we sum up the square foot of living area by floor. First floor, second floor, any half-story areas, any finished basement. If there is unfinished area in the house, a portion of the house is unfinished, we will also note that there, so that may be subtracted from the sum total of the square foot of living area. We have a sketch portion of the card here where we will be doing a perimeter sketch of your house, labeling the dimensions, labeling the number of floors, and labeling the exterior wall material. On the bottom of the card is the additional improvement section. That's where we will be codifying and collecting additional improvements to the parcel, such as porches, garages, barns, pools, sheds, silos, things such as that nature. Okay? And that's basically the information that we are looking for during the data collection portion of the project. The next sheet in your packet is a sample of a data mailer. This is the property, the property summary that we will be mailing to the property owner. Following the data collection. And we'll have your mailing address, the property ID, the location of the property, property dimensions, sales information. If there has been any recent sale of the property, we will give you the sale date and the sale price for you to verify. The type of, of entry, whether this is an estimate on our part, or whether this was an interior inspection. We'll have the zoning type. The site number. If the parcel is large and complex and has multiple sites, multiple dwellings on it, we will give you a property data summary for each site on the parcel. The property type is the predominant use of the parcel. This particular parcel, in our example, was a property class 120. It was a field crop parcel. Available utilities was electric. They had a private water supply and a private sewer type. And then we go on to describe the residence data. This was an old-style building, old-style home with exterior wood siding, had a partial basement, hot air heat, oil fired, no central air. It was built in 1897. The total square foot of living area on it was 2,500, 25 square feet. There were two bedrooms, four bedrooms, and no fireplaces. At the bottom of the data mailer, it states that the type of entry shown above is an estimate or a refusal. You may call the contractor's office at the office number to arrange for an inspection. Be aware that there may be other data items that have been collected for the property which are not included in this report, and then corrections have been made, please sign and date below and mail back to our project office. Now, as it states here, there may be other items that have been collected. This is a summary of the information collected. It does not list all of the potential improvements for a parcel. It doesn't list individually all of the porches and sheds, et cetera. So there may be some miscellaneous improvements that are not included on the data mailer, but it will have all the major components collected on that parcel. For this particular parcel, being an agricultural parcel, it further goes on to describe our land breakdown of the parcel. We have the primary acre. That's where the, the house is. Four acres of residual land. That's basically the land surrounding the barns and the support land surrounding the barns. We had 60 acres of pillable land, and the productivity rating, the soil rating, was judged to be normal for that. We will be breaking down agricultural lands, not only by their use, but also by their productivity, be it poor, normal, or good. We had 10 acres of woodlands, which was also judged to be of normal soil productivity. And then he had 15.1 acres of wasteland, the total of 90.1 acres. Now, if you have designated wetlands on your property, we will be noting those. We will be getting the designated wetland maps from the county, transposing those to the tax maps, and calculating out acreages of designated wetlands. Wasteland could be non-designated lands that is simply swampy or unproductive, gully, ravine, et cetera. And then we do have, for the agricultural parcels, we give a listing of the improvements, the porches, the canopies, the barns, the sheds, and the silos and storage bins. And we have a literal translation of them, the dimensions, the year built, and how many of that particular structure is present. This is the summary of the information that we will be mailing to you for your verification. If there are any erroneous items on there, it's a chance for you to scratch them out, write in the corrected information, mail it back to us, and we will make those corrections. Or you may simply keep it for your records to know what we have collected for your parcel. Accompanying, accompanying with the data mailer will be a property description report, glossary of terms, definitions, and this is the last page of the handout that I've given you. And it simply goes on to state what is included when we're talking about sale date, sale price, utility, year built, building style, basement type, heat type. It basically defines the terms that are used on the data mailer. That covers the information that I wanted to present to you tonight about data collection. As I stated earlier, we will be having a similar meeting prior to the release of the full disclosure notice. Your property's estimate of market value will be having a meeting such as this. We will certainly attempt to have that well-publicized so that it may be well-attended. And on that, we will describe the full disclosure notice. We will show you an example of it, the information contained on it. We will describe what information you should be gathering from that notice, how to read it, how to interpret it. And then we will be describing the informal hearing process, which is your chance as a property owner to set up an appointment with one of our appraisers to come in. We'll show you all of the data collected, all of our computerized documents pertaining to your parcel, and we will explain how we arrived at the value for your parcel. And then we will listen to what you have to say, and we will note down what you have to say about that parcel. I'd like to open it back up to questions now, and I'll field whatever I can. Please understand that, as the woman had indicated, I may not know some of the, the past history of the culmination of the, the project here. I'm here as the contractor. We've been hired to do a particular project. I'd like to be able to address questions pertaining to the project, if I may. So, yes, sir.
I didn't interrupt you. You didn't have, uh, mention industry in any way. Going to evaluate industry?
Yes. We will be doing each and every parcel in the town, be it residential, farm, vacant, commercial, or industrial. We do have a property record card specifically designed... Yes, sir, yes. We, we do have a property record card specifically designed for the collection of commercial and industrial parcels, and we do have the evaluation programs that will allow us to evaluate those parcels.
We, I've been through this with Brandy. Okay, we were allowed to review all the data collected before we complained about any of our data. About... We, we were allowed to do all of Brandy's data before we complained about what we had...
Formal hearing. Okay, what we will be providing is an assessment roll for...
We'd be allowed to do that. Madam, I have the floor, please.
Oh, I, I just pointed the way that the town of Brandy did their own Santa Claus, and it wasn't an outside firmly handle that through the place.
Okay, same here. Yeah. We were evaluated at a pretty high price. I don't mind telling you, $62,000 because we were on the river. And they told us to, you know, move back. And by far, I was talking $4,000. Is that the way you...
But that makes sense to you, and that location may have an effect on the value of your parcel. Location does have a great deal to do with a parcel's value. If it's a desirable location on the river, yes, sir, it probably would be worth more than a parcel sitting underneath a power line. So location is important, and that is a question to account.
Will mortgage holders also receive a...
Well, no. We will be course timing with the property owner themselves. However, when the, the bank receives the future tax bills, every year, they do an analysis of your escrow account based on the previous year's bills and dispersments that they've paid from escrow, and they will adjust accordingly once they have received those bills. So they receive the tax bills, but they...
They're going to ask you.
Right. And they will adjust your, your escrow account accordingly.
Our taxes went from the school, went from $314 to $847. That's true. Maybe people would be interested. Land taxes went from $375, the school taxes went from $375 to $100. The town didn't get much of it. It was the county that got most of it.
Okay. While...
Yeah, I know, I know. But I may be...
A revaluation project. I would like to point out that a revaluation project is not an effort on the part of the town or the county to raise more tax dollars. It is a redistribution of the tax burden based on a revaluation, a re-division of the town's assessments. It is not an effect to raise more money. In this current state fiscal crisis that we are in, even if budgets do not go up, state aid to municipalities, state aid to school districts has been decreasing, such that a larger proportion of their budgets may have to be raised through the real property tax. Okay? That's a fact of life, whether you're revaluing or not. The point I would like to make is that as long as they are raising more money of more of their budget percentage through the real property tax, it behooves us to have the most equitable role possible, and that, in effect, is what we're aiming for here. We are trying to go in, describe property, property accurately, derive an accurate estimate of its market value, such that, yes, we all have to pay our taxes, but let's make sure that we're only paying our fair share. And let's make sure that our assessment is defensive... And let's make sure that our assessment is defensible and reasonable. And that's really what we as a contractor are here to provide. Do you have any follow-ups, sir?
Well, just the county is making a war, and we're talking about raising the sales taxes.
I mean, they gain one way.
You were talking about unique properties and how you were going to evaluate that because you don't have anything to compare them to. I say this because I had a unique property five years ago that I sold, and it cost almost $100,000 to build. It was appraised at $93,000. After a year and a half, it only sold for $68,000. So you're not going to get an accurate picture. I mean, it's still going to be a guessing game where you're concerned, the same as most market values, because you can only compare, you know, apples and apples, oranges and oranges for so long, and then there's going to be other variables that will come into play that aren't going to give you an accurate picture.
undertaking, and every parcel is unique, every parcel stands on its own merits. And yes, there is that judgment there, there may be some surprises there. What we're not trying to do is predict future selling price. We're saying, okay, based on what has happened historically in the town, here's our best estimate of its current market value. There may be a subsequent sale down the line that either supports or negates our estimate of that value, and we cannot predict that. We are not trying to predict future selling prices, and there may be even a couple parcels out there that surprise us. We may think, oh, you know, we did a good job of estimating it, but for some reason, it sold for something far different than what we may have expected. There may be some of that.
The replacement cost of rebuilding, the replacement cost.
That is one of the methods.
But those don't reflect market value all the time.
Well, it's... It's a method, okay? Obviously, for residential parcels, our preferred method is the direct market comparison. However, there may be some overbuilt parcels out there, parcels that are so unique in their content, that there have been no sales of anything comparable to it, that we are almost forced to look at another method of appraising that property, such as replacement cost minus depreciation, and then if it is an overdevelopment for the town, applying some functional obsolescence for the overdevelopment. And we do have methodology, we do have the appraisal theory and the appraisal background to recognize that and to respond to it. Sir?
Unemployment put into the picture of all these companies moving out and laying people off?
If it has been affecting your market values, yes.
Because that's one of the reasons why a lot of these houses aren't selling, because a lot of people are losing their jobs and going on unemployment, and then there are closures.
Right. And this has been something that has been going on... In Oswego County, this has been going on for quite some time. What we will be doing is looking at your sales. Has this affected your sales in the past couple of years? Has it gotten worse, or has it leveled off? We will be analyzing your sales to determine that. You're asking me, is unemployment affecting that? It may well be. That's what we'll be trying to determine based on your sales. We won't be trying to pin down why something is happening. Is it the recession? Is it unemployment? Is it, you know, acid rain? What we'll be trying to say is, what effect has all of the combined influences been having on selling prices of properties? And that's what we're trying to determine. Perhaps not the reason why, but what is happening? Yes, ma'am?
Will you be taking into consideration those who have not been raised over the last few years versus those who have been raised annually, or would that be a part of...
We will not be taking that into consideration, but that will show up in the shifting that occurs when you go to full market value. Now, if assessments have not been maintained for a particular parcel for the last 20 years, okay, it was revalued maybe back in the 70s and has retained the same assessment year after year after year, while some parcels may have sold a couple of times and then, you know, had been revalued, okay, right now, those two parcels, they may be comparable in market value, but their assessments may be different. That's inequity. So the result of the revaluation will be that the person who has been, his assessment's been changed over the years, he may see a decrease in his taxes because he's currently over-assessed in relationship to other similar properties in the town, whereas the parcel that has not had its assessment changed may be undervalued in relationship to his neighbor who's had his assessment fiddled with over the years, and he may be actually picking up a share of his neighbor's prior over-assessment. So there's shifting that goes on, and while we don't look to see what the prior assessment was, that's really not our function. All we're trying to do is say, what's its current market value? What's its current best estimate of market value? And then whatever shifting occurs, occurs, and we don't respond so much to the shift, the change in the tax dollars, as is our estimate of value correct? And if it is, we've done our job. And we are not in a position to rectify what has been done in the past. We can simply say, well, from this point on, we've got it right, let's maintain it. Questions?
You were talking about assessing building lots. Is the town board asking you to do that? Unless a piece of property was put up for sale, or who are you to say it's a building lot there?
There may be a filed subdivision.
No, there isn't. If it's put up for sale for a building lot, how are you to...
Our definition of a building lot is undeveloped land is land which has imminent development apparent, such that it's a filed subdivision, or it's been staked out and surveyed specifically for building lots. If we don't have that indication, we will call it something else, such as residual land or woodland, whatever. We describe its current use, and in order for it to be called a building lot, which is what we call undeveloped, it's a potential building lot, it has to show signs by definition of imminent development. And that comes right out of our manual.
Well, I said to you was, if it has never been put up as for sale as a building lot, who are you to say it's a building lot? Now, if the first people that own the land, if they have never put it up for sale, just because there's room there to plant another house doesn't mean it's a building lot.
Automatically call it a building lot. We will call it something else, residential land. I'm saying the only time we call it a building lot is if it shows the signs of imminent development, such as a planned subdivision. Its intention is as a building lot then, okay?
That is different than if you were alone, run through there, saying, my understanding you're supposed to come in and assess the houses, not the land.
No, sir, we are here to place an estimate of market value on each piece of property in the town, be it residential, farm, vacant, commercial, industrial. Every piece of property in the town, we will be supplying the town with an estimate of its market value based on its current use, not its future use. We're not aiming for the razor's edge here. We're not saying, well, as we drive down a country road, everything with frontage is a potential building lot.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. That is not your jurisdiction to tell somebody what their property is. Let's go with the current use.
Based on our observation.
But the way you were talking a little while ago, I thought you were going to say, well, these can be building lots, and that isn't up to you, is it?
No, by definition, and here again, that's the way we're trained, it's right out of the state manual, it has to show signs of imminent development.
So what you're saying in a sense, if two people live side by side, have a 100-acre parcel side by side, one puts a sign out advertising for sale, his assessment will go up because it's potential building lots now, and the other guys won't?
That is not what I said.
That's not what you said.
That is not what I said.
So the assessment would be the same on both parts?
Yes, because they are still currently used the same, okay? Assessing isn't done based on highest and best use necessarily, it's based on current use.
What if somebody's got, let's say, a major subdivision at the planning board, whatever, you know about it, and it's a 100-acre parcel next to a 100-acre parcel? Because he's dividing that up, does that mean the one with the major subdivision planned is going to be taxed more than the one that does not have the major subdivision?
Perhaps it does, because he's taken the steps to actually improve the value of that parcel. He's gone through the zoning and the planning, and he may have had the surveys done, and he may have even constructed roads, or he may have gas and water in there.
But if he hasn't constructed, he's only got the map file. In other words, the town has been notified that, yes, he plans on doing this in the future. He has given them the maps for the subdivision.
Then I would say, when he starts actually doing it, that's when it should be called undeveloped land.
When he starts actually doing...
Developing the lots, developing the subdivision.
So just because the answer was the town board, it won't affect...
It needs, as I said, it needs to show imminent development. That means putting the road in and selling off the lots. We're not looking for future use, we as data collectors and appraisers, okay? Once it occurs, then the updateability of the file will allow the change to be made from, say, a residual use, lying vacant, to an undeveloped use. Yes, he's selling off building lots, and it's based on current use.
You're going to be doing the revale for the town as well, is that correct? You're going to be doing the revale as well as part of the data collection, and you're going into revale continuing. Are you going into revale with 100% assessment, full value assessment in mind, or fractional assessment in mind?
I believe the town has contracted for full value assessment.
We've already done that? Is that right, Ed?
Hasn't been spelled out.
He just said that.
I think that's incorrect. That's an option.
That's an option, but what the contractor's going to do, because it's not up to him to determine the percent, obviously.